Good afternoon, everyone. This is a joint meeting of the Baltimore City Council's Education, Youth, and Older Adult and Public Safety Committee is now called to order. I am Councilman John Bullock representing West Baltimore's 9th District.
And I am Mark Conway, representing the 4th District and Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
So present with us members of the Education, Youth, and Older Adult Committee. We have Councilman Zach Blanchard of the 11th District and Councilman Jermaine Jones of the 12th District and will be joined by several other colleagues shortly.
All right. Today, the committee is holding a hearing.
And then we also have members of the Public Safety Committee. So, and I would also like to note Councilman Paris Gray of the 8th District. We're in the 8th District, so thank you for having us in your backyard as well.
There we go.
And before we get started, please make sure folks have their cell phones either on mute or silent, please.
And forgive us, this is the first time we have hosted a joint hearing. This is also the first time we have hosted a hearing in the public. So we'll be working out some of the kinks, please bear with us.
All right, so today, the committee is holding a hearing on LO-250019 Legislative Oversight Summer Youth Program.
For the purpose of the joint committee holding hearings with relevant city agencies, including the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Public School System, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, and the Baltimore City Department of Recreation and Parks, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Baltimore City Youth Fund, and others, to present information relevant to the city's plans and opportunities for young people during the summer and how the city plans to ensure the accountability and safety of its young people over the course of the summer. I'll turn it over to the President for some open remarks.
Thank you Chairs Bullock and Conway for convening this first joint committee hearing and our first hearing, as I said, outside of City Hall. Thank you also to Councilmember Gray for welcoming us to the great 8th District and for helping to make this hearing happen. Principal Simmons and the staff of Edmondson Westside High School, you have our deepest gratitude for hosting us this evening. Thank you to Dr. Santelisces and the city schools team, to Mayor Scott, Deputy Mayor Merrill, Director Mavronis, BPD, the state's Attorney's Office, Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner Simmons. Thank you all and to all the partners that are here with us as well. The 74th City Council is committed to doing our work with the people and for the people that we serve. That means getting outside the walls of City Hall and holding hearings in schools and other community spaces. At a time when our democracy is under strain, citizens need to see and interact directly with their government, including council members. And that's what we're doing here at Edmondson Westside today. One of the things I love about Baltimore is the way we love our young people. That means keeping them safe and providing opportunities to grow and thrive during the summer. We boast one of the best summer youth works programs in the country. We are going to put this summer over 8,000 children to work in summer youth works jobs. We also have the Summer Youth Collaborative, which is a consortium of nonprofits, cultural institutions, city schools, and other partners, city government, who are working together to provide educational opportunities to tens of thousands of kids throughout our city. The council is making, is committed to making sure every child in Baltimore has the support and accountability they need to succeed. Today's hearing will give us an opportunity to learn more about the wide range of recreational, educational, and employment opportunities that will be available as part of Mayor Scott's Be More This Summer Outside in 2025 Youth Engagement Strategy. We need to be honest and transparent about some of the challenges that we face. With just weeks until the start of summer, the Trump administration has already begun divesting from places like Baltimore. We know their playbook. Abandon our most vulnerable residents and leave city governments to deal with the devastating consequences of that disregard. We also know that many organizations, including city schools and frankly, city government, have lost funding due to cuts by the administration in Washington and their cascading impacts. That makes the work we are doing here even more urgent. It is critically important that we understand both the Mayor's Summer Safety Plan and also any gaps that exist in the youth opportunity landscape. If funding has been moved, we need to understand how it can be replaced. We know that when kids are learning and working, they are less likely to be in trouble. As a former city school's teacher and current city school's dad, I know that it truly takes a village, or in this case, an entire city, to give our children the opportunities they need and deserve to succeed. Again, I am incredibly grateful to my colleagues on the council, particularly Councilman Gray and the two chairs that have convened us here today, and I'm looking forward to this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great day for us to be here at Edmondson Westside High School. I'm blessed and honored to be the Chair of our Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee. One of my most favored roles is as an educator, but my most important role is as a father. And so the two men to my left and my right, as well as some of our colleagues are fathers. There's a Paris Gray's child is in the front row as well. The reality, though, is that we know that our greatest investment, our greatest prize in our city is you, the young people that we're looking at. And our young people deserve quality opportunities, whether they be around educational enrichment, if they be around the arts, if it also be around employment. I'm fortunate that my son will be one of those 8,500 youth workers, and I know that some of you I'm looking at right now will be youth workers. The other thing that I want to lift up, and it's so important that we be here in the school and in front of these young people who are not only the current leaders of their school and in their community, but the future leaders of our city. And so these young people who are engaged in student government, again, they're bright and shining examples of what's possible. Oftentimes, we look at Baltimore, we can think about the challenges. Folks will talk about our young people and what they're doing, what they're not doing. But we have evidence that they're looking for opportunities, but it's up to us to stand in the gap, to fill in those opportunities, to build those bridges, to create those opportunities, those pathways to the future. I know in education, I know in employment, I know with athletics and arts did for me, and we want the same things for you. So the things we want for our children are also the things we want for you. We want you to be safe. We want our older adults to look at our young people and be, see themselves in them, to see that what once was can be so much better in the future. We know then, years passed, things have not always been how they could have been. And so your voice is important, but as, as parents, as legislators, it's our job to make sure we hear from you and also hear from your parents, because there are adults here who also love and care for you and want to see the best for you. And this is why we're having this hearing in a community setting where it's more accessible. So again, we look forward to have a robust conversation. We know we'll hear from city agencies, we'll also hear from young people, we'll hear from parents, and you'll hear some questions from us. So again, thank you all for being here. For those who may be watching online, for those who may consume it later, again, our work is just beginning. So I'll turn it over to my colleague Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate your partnership. First, I want to begin by thanking all of the city agencies and all the folks that are here today, city agencies over here to our left. I want to thank some of the youth leaders I met from the Student Council, actually, just before this meeting. I appreciate you guys coming here and the many other youths that are here to participate in this dialogue. I want to appreciate the community partners here, here, and of course, my council members, my colleagues who are here to join us today. This hearing is much more than a check-in. It's a call to action. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I have seen firsthand that the investments that we make in our young people are directly tied to safety, vitality, and the long-term resilience of our city. Summer is a critical window where we need to be fully engaged in our communities, our parks, our rec centers, and doing that in partnership with the folks on the ground, as we should all year. We can't afford to sit by idly while we watch summer resources impacted by significant shortfalls be challenged. As I look around the room, I see a ton of brilliant, creative, and young resilient folks. And as your elected officials, we owe it to you to make sure that you have access to the best opportunities and feel safe and involved this summer, whether it's through employment or enrichment, or simply, simply just a safe space to, to belong. You deserve much more than a plan. You deserve a promise. Today, we're here to better understand the strategy behind this summer, this year's Summer Youth Engagement Initiative. We're aligning, we're aligning resources across city agencies. We want to know how we're tracking participation and outcomes. Are we centering our efforts in the voices and the needs of the young people who are here today? And particularly, the young people who are at most risk? And how do we intend to bridge the funding gaps that we know exist and ensure that we have an adequate youth programming plan for the summer? So I'm looking forward to having a frank and productive conversation. I want to make sure that we shine a light on what's working. I want to make sure that we're honest about what is not and that we move with urgency to ensure that every young person in Baltimore has a summer worth remembering for all the right reasons. So we're going to jump in today. I want to give you a quick rundown of the flow of the hearing. We're going to start out with public testimony. We're going to allow folks to testify. If you haven't signed up, there's a sign-up sheet, I believe, in the back. You will join us up here to testify. We're going to allow for, I think, 10 people initially to testify before we then hear from our agencies to hear about our summer youth engagement plans for the summer. Then we'll open up to questions from the council members here before we go back to public testimony. So there will be two bites at the apple for public testimony. I really welcome everyone here who's looking to testify. Please take your opportunity. We'll be affording two minutes for public testimony. Anything else I'm forgetting, Mr. Chair? Okay, all right. So with that, for folks that are interested in testifying, I know some folks signed up early on, you're welcome to line up right here. We'll call you by name.
Okay, okay, let's start with Nyla Davis. Okay, I'm going to go down, I'm going to go down the list. Let's see. Brittany Johnson.
Greetings, council members. I want to thank you for being here. Can you guys hear me?
There we are.
Okay, thank you.
Stay a little closer to the microphone.
Okay. I was just saying greetings. Thank you guys for being here and hosting this meeting for us, to the council members for taking their time out. My name is Brittany Johnson. I'm a parent of Karen and Nadia Wilkins who attend Leath Walk Elementary Middle School, and they are currently enrolled in the Child First Authority program, a program that supports Leath Walk in aftercare as well as the summer. And it is literally a life-saving program. It's a program that supports me as a single parent, gives my children a safe atmosphere to be in where they grow and are enriched with different opportunities to learn different subjects that some, it's something that I wasn't afforded when I was coming up. It's a program that is absolutely needed. Last summer, while I was on my own journey of searching for employment, support was something that I did not have. Being able to count on my children's school and their staff and their associations that they have, like the Child First Authority, I was able to quickly find employment, but then there comes, who's going to be there to support my children when school gets out? Child First is definitely something that is absolutely needed within our community. They have been given opportunities such as first-time experiences that I didn't even have in terms of the different programs that they offer, dance, sports, things that I currently could not afford at the time last year. So this is something that is, I can't say it enough, is something that has really been life-changing for us. We all experienced our first baseball game together. You know, so that's, it's something that is, has been life-altering for our family and my children. Being given a safe environment where they are poured into and they are given these opportunities only allows them to grow further. Their grades are excelling. They are both frequent honor roll students. It's just something that I wouldn't be able to be here and testify and say that this, that the company is not great enough. So thank you guys so much for the opportunity, and yeah, we need it. It's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
No, just really thank you for your testimony, just as, as a parent, what it really means. When we touch a child, we touch the whole family. So again, it's emblematic of that, so thank you. Dorothy Flintall.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dorothy Flintall. I have proudly been a part of Child First family for the past eight years, where our mission is to provide high quality after-school, summer, and community school programs in Baltimore City. My journey began as a parent volunteer when my oldest son, Tayshawn, was in the 3rd grade at Barclay Elementary Middle. He had been in the Child First program since kindergarten. After that school year, I was offered the position of Parent Investment Coordinator, a role I gladly accepted. That opportunity marked the beginning of my career with Child First. For me, Child First is not just a job, it's a family. All three of my children have been enrolled in the program at Barclay. My oldest son is now a 12th grade student at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School. He served as a Child First Student Ambassador, completed the after-school culinary program, which is his true passion, participated in the sports league, and now gives back as a Child First employee. He works year-round as a teaching assistant and coach for the basketball and football teams, where his younger brother Logan now plays. My daughter Arden is currently in the 7th grade at Barclay, actively participating in the same programs. And my youngest Logan is in the 3rd grade, right where R began for my family. Child First has helped increase the income for my family, and Child First has created a lasting impact on my family and many others by providing free access to enriching academic, creative, and athletic programs. The organization has also empowered parents like me by offering meaningful employment to those who want to be involved in their children's education and growth. If Child First and other after-school programs, summer programs were to continue to lose funding, these vital opportunities offered at 12 Child First schools and other schools would be lost. Students would miss out on the transformative experiences that have shaped my children's lives, and parents will lose the chance to be a part of something bigger. A supportive community that uplifts families from within. Child First is more than a program. It's a pathway and support system and a lifeline. I strongly urge continued and expanded support for Child First so that more families can benefit, just as mine has. Today, I'm asking the council to take two specific actions. First, restore the summer funding to its previous level so we can maintain our full five-week program that Baltimore families depend on. Second, visit our summer sites to see firsthand the impact of these programs on our communities and commit to being champions for educational equity in Baltimore. The future of our children, the strength of our communities, depend on your actions today. We need your help to ensure that every child in Baltimore has access to the same opportunities that has transformed my family's lives. Thank you for this time.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Ms. Flintall. We appreciate you, we appreciate you lifting up the work of Child First once again. Before we go on to additional testimony, I do want to note that we've been joined by two members of the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee, Councilman Mark Parker of the 1st District and Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District.
All right, next up, we have Ellie Mitchell. And after that, we've got Alexandria Warwick Adams. You're welcome to line up right after.
Good evening, Council President Cohen, Chairs Bullock and Conway, members of the City Council. My name is Ellie Mitchell, and I'm the Director of the Maryland Out-of-School Time Network. I'm also a lifelong Baltimore resident and parent. And Baltimore is facing a serious challenge this summer, and we're not alone. Districts across the state are struggling as ESAR funding runs out, and each new cut from Washington hits our schools and nonprofits harder, pushing an already fragile system closer to crisis. And that's why I'm here tonight. I urge you to use every resource available and the power of partnerships to close the gap this summer. But short-term fixes aren't enough. Baltimore needs a North Star, a bold, shared vision for youth opportunity, developed with input from young people, city agencies, and community-based providers. The truth is Baltimore has never reached scale. In after-school or summer programming, we have serious gaps by age, neighborhood, and program types, and too few programs have the resources to offer the quality full-day, comprehensive support that truly helps kids thrive in the summer and helps working families go to work. This moment demands action, and if the mayor and city council set ambitious goals and back them up with a plan to build a sustained and coordinated system, we can change the trajectory for years to come. To close the gap this summer, then build the system our kids deserve. And in my written testimony, I've offered a few other city examples of that kind of bold vision-setting and collaborative system-building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Again, we have Alexandria Warwick Adams, and after that, we have Cecia Calero.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Alex Warwick Adams, Executive Director of Elevate Baltimore. Thank you for having us and thank you for coming into the community. I represent an entire strategy and an organization that serves over 600 young people every year in our after-school program alone. In our summer programs, we serve additional 600 students every summer. So this is not just about the summer funding gap. We're talking about a year-long programmatic strategy that young people need in order for us as a city to ensure that our young people are safe, supported, and are moving in the direction that we know that they can. As an organization, a nonprofit, it is extremely important that we highlight the role that nonprofits play in not just providing services to young people, but as an economic driver. After-school programs both employ people and provide safe spaces for young people. It is incredibly important, particularly when after-school programs are interrupted, to look at the entire system and how that affects the entire city. It affects young people's learning being interrupted, it interrupts their opportunities to build relationships with caring adults, and it also interrupts their ability to realize their true potential. I know that the city does not have all of the resources, but as an organization, we're here to work in partnership to identify solutions. We work in partnership with city schools to ensure that we are being part of the solution, not part of exacerbating the problems, but we are not exempt. Recently, we just got hit with a termination of grant notice from the federal government. So we too are doing more with less. And so I challenge the council, I challenge the city, I challenge all of us as Baltimoreans to identify the solution that we can create for ourselves and for the communities in which we say we love. Thank you.
No, thank you. I do want to, I know we have another person coming, please go ahead, but I also want to make a note for the young people who are here. We've had a chance to hear from service providers and nonprofits and parents. We would love to hear from you as well. So again, feel free to come up next if you like. Please proceed.
Thank you, City Council, for having this meeting. My name is Cecia, and I'm with Baltimore's Promise with their C-RAC initiative. I'm standing here today because of the opportunities that summer programs have made possible for me as an immigrant. Summer program and gave, I'm sorry, these programs have given me job exposure, mentors, college tours, experiences that I wouldn't have access to otherwise. I'm deeply grateful for them. They have helped me build confidence in the skills that I need to step into this workforce. These programs weren't just something to do in the summer, but they were the big building blocks of my life. Now, as city Baltimore immigrants' population continues to grow, these programs will become more crucial. Summer program gives young people, especially those from immigrant backgrounds and especially as well as marginalized communities, the chance for lasting relationships, building community, and exploring careers and opportunities that they don't know that might exist. Beyond my personal impact and the impact on the immigrant community, summer program is just a smart public policy. For every dollar spent on youth programming, cities save on public safety, reducing learning loss, and also supporting young people's mental and physical health. It's a proactive investment, one that pays off for young peoples, their families, and a city as a whole. It would be unthinkable for a city that says that values young people for its summer program to disappear. So I urge you, whatever power you have, please use it. We do not do whatever you can to save summer for young people in Baltimore. Thank you.
And thank you, and as you come to the mic, please, please give us your name.
Hello, City Councilmen. My name is Jordan Porter, and I wanted to say thank you for choosing my school to hold this council meeting. I'm an SGA student here at Edmondson Westside High School, and I am fortunate enough to be one of the youth who will be working youth works this summer. It's helped me financially and it keeps me busy this summer and out of trouble. I was placed at a wrestling camp this summer, and it gives me a great opportunity to get better at my sport, better at the sport I love, and exercise my leadership skills. My question today is what type of outdoor activities do you have planned to keep the youth active and out of trouble?
No, thank you for speaking. Thank you for raising the issue. As you say that, it does make me want to also, as we're in the space, remember Harry Preston, who was a longtime teacher, who also spent a lot of time on the wrestling program and also here at Edmondson Westside High School, so I definitely lift him up.
I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who's joined us.
Do we have any additional students who'd like to come forward? Well, at this point, we're going to have all the testimony come, and then we're also going to have our agencies be able to speak on that. And I want, and I want also, and I'm glad you asked a question, and we have our committee staff that's recording it. So one, this is perfect. An educator in me loves this. One of the things that happens at council meetings is that we will hear from testimony, from, from the public, and what we have is committee staff that's here, and they also will record the questions, not only for the council members who are present, but also for the city agencies who will also be reporting out. So as the city agencies come forward, they can also give even better voice to some of those specific questions, and if not, we can also push that. So again, this is a back and forth, so thank you for raising the question, thank you for amplifying that voice, and again, thank you for testifying today.
Good evening, Councilmen. My name is Carter Bryan, I'm a 10th grade class president. I have a 400 GP at Edmondson Westside High School. I play basketball, and this summer I have the opportunity to do dual enrollment and also get paid through it. I'm excited for this because it helped me and my family see money for college and it also helped me pursue my career in engineering.
All right, let me see, hopefully I get this correct. Karen Masaruen. And what I'll do is I'll call names. If no one responds, I'll go to the next name on the list. Trish Garcia-Pia.
I too am a Baltimore city resident. I was born, raised here, live here still. My kids went to Baltimore City Schools, and my middle child is a Baltimore scholar at Johns Hopkins. I truly believe she would not be there if not for her CodeWorks opportunity, which is a youth works employee site, and I happen to work at Code in the Schools. But I do believe that tech education gave her a leg up to be at Hopkins and survive at Hopkins and still be thriving there. My youngest has a full ride to George Washington University and because of BSA and resources there. So we have benefited as a family because they got this, these great opportunities because of what the city has to offer, especially in the summertime. And being another nonprofit worker, I'm not going to repeat what Ellie and Alex said because that's, that is exactly what I have to say also. You know, we didn't get summer funding for our CodeWorks this year. It's always in flux, and so we need to find ways that these It's always in flux, and so we need to find ways that these nonprofits that fill the gaps, that bring very high-quality programming. Our students at CodeWorks go on to all kinds of scholarships throughout the country because of their coding skills and because we get them certifications, and they get to go work at Amazon and Google, and they get internships with Social Security with their coding skills. We will not be able to get them these resources and these opportunities without summer funding. So please find ways for us to keep filling the gaps, and the Rec and Parks money isn't going to do it because it's hard for nonprofits to cut through the bureaucracy. So you have to be able to funnel funds into places like the Summer Funding Collaborative to be able to fund all of us. My friend Mary Alexander has an amazing program for Youth Works, and if she doesn't get funding and she's planning all year, she won't be able to do her program. And I want little places like hers that are so wonderful to be able to keep doing what they do, to be able to get kids the opportunities they need in the summertime. Thank you for listening. Thank you for having this tonight. And I appreciate you letting us go over the time because I was going to say what my friend Kim always says at board meetings, and that three minutes is not enough.
It never is. Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to allow, I think this is the last one we have. Yeah. Okay. Kim, I see you. Actually, we should just get you now. Come on, Kim.
And as you're coming forward, I just want to note some of the themes from the last two speakers. One, we think about for our committee and for our city, preparing our young people for college and career pathways, and so which is very much a big part of that, but also for our immigrant community finding that pathway as well. So Ms. Trueheart, please, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. Thank you for what you do. I think we need to reframe the discussion because economically we're in a bad place. We need to think about restructuring everything we do to fill the gaps. I had a program at the Rec Center that on Friday they were terminated by Trump. It was a $3 million grant from the National Science Foundation. It employed 20 youths after school every day, and those kids are now unemployed. It was a shock to them. So that's one barrier, the federal government. Another barrier is we need to think about how the youth fund is doling out or not doling out monies. I think we need a hearing on that. Another issue that can come to me earlier in the spring is people need safe places to run their programs. At least five organizations reached out to me because they wanted to come to the Rec Center. If we don't have the spaces for the programs to operate, I think we need to look at funding the school system to open the schools up for these programs to habitate in the buildings. It's going to cost money, and Dr. Santalisa, I'm sure, will tell you, she's got to hire maintenance and security and all of that, but we need to do it. Another obstacle that we need to overcome is when we repurpose the youth fund's money to augment the city budget, that's not what it was intended for. And I have a problem, a real problem with that, especially the limitations on youth clause in the charter says in the absence of federal and state money, then you can do something like that. But there was no absence of federal and state money for Youth Works this year. I think there are a lot of obstacles that we've built on our own in these systems that we can manage, we can overcome, and I hope you have the courage to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. All right, we're going to call up our last three folks who have signed up. We have Ohida Hall, Victoria LeBron, and Kaia Williams.
First, let me say good evening to the young people. It's so good to see you, to our council president, to the members of the Baltimore City Council, the mayor's office. Thank you to Councilmember Conway and Bullock for hosting a very timely meeting. My name is Ajada Hall. I'm a resident of the Third District, and I serve as Executive Director of the Child First Authority. For nearly 30 years, Child First has witnessed, as many of you have firsthand, how our out-of-school time programs transform the lives of at least 600 young people annually, and particularly during these vulnerable summer months. As I look up at all of you, you mentioned how many of you are fathers. I'm a big fan of fatherhood, especially Black fathers. You're doing an incredible job. I have to speak with deep concern about the reduction of summer funding. For Child First, it may mean at least $40,000. And with that decreased funding, our summer program will be reduced from five weeks to just four, cutting short critical learning opportunities for students from Barclay, for students from Calvin Rodwell, for students from Furman L. Templeton, Gardenville, Leithwalk, Liberty, and our other partner schools. The impact of the reductions are far-reaching. As I said, we will cut back our number of weeks. We're also going to scale back our twice-weekly field trips to just one time per week. These were field trips where we're getting students out, not just to have fun, not just for recreation, but also to see how Baltimore makes its money, to see their future, to see their opportunities. We were going to take them to New York City to see Broadway plays, expose them to different arts and culture beyond their neighborhoods. All of this will likely be count-canceled. And perhaps most importantly is the reduction in safe and structured programming during a time when many families have very few alternatives. And what makes the cut particularly challenging, or the loss of summer funding challenging, is that several of our 12 partner schools have also lost funding for their own summer programs. So we anticipate unprecedented levels for our, unprecedented demand for our services precisely when we are least equipped to meet it. One week of programming may sound like a little bit, but it represents more than just five days. It represents 35 hours of missed academic support, of nutritious meals to a day for children who might not have them, and continual social-emotional learning that prevents summer trauma and violence. I guess I want to say one thing because I'm at my time. I urge this council to make it happen despite the shortfalls. Call on who you got to call on. Call on the business community. Call on the foundation community. Call on the Lord. Just call on somebody to help us restore these lost opportunities. We're not talking about just losses in dollars, but we're talking about lost opportunities. Let's make it happen. Let's make it all of our mission, as I know you try to do every day, to put all of Baltimore children's first and to lead us out of the generational poverty that has been a problem for so many generations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say, when you mention the one week, it reminds me of my personal experience just planning for the summer with my wife and the frantic pace at which we try to figure out what to do for each week of the summer. If you've got kids, you don't want your five-year-old at home alone because I have to go to work. So it is very serious. I appreciate you bringing that up. We have Victoria LeBron. And Kaia Williams, or Kia Williams, maybe. All right.
Well, the great thing about this hearing, and you're coming now, I will say, if anybody who wants to testify, understand that this is not the last opportunity. So after this next testimony, we'll hear from our agency representatives, have some more questions from council members, and we'll return to public testimony. So please go right ahead.
I would first like to say hi. My name is Kaia Williams. I am an upcoming junior at Coppin State University. One thing that I would like to say about the summer programs is it's a lot more, people see it as, oh, we're just going for a job. I would say there's no internships. As a special education measure, I find it hard to find internships in my field because there's no funding. So nobody wants to hire somebody before their license because they don't have the funding to pay you through the summer. So my question is, what would you say for the students that aren't just looking for a job just to do it, but looking for internships? Where do they find those?
Thank you, Kaia. Thank you.
My name is Peyton Stanfield. I'm a student here at Emerson. I'm a junior here at Emerson Westside High School, and I am also the Student Government Executive Board here at Emerson. I am the secretary and senator. I fill both spots or just fill in where I'm needed. And one of my fellow SGA members, Carter Brown, he talked about the dual enrollment program and how he will be starting his dual enrollment program next year. I am currently in the dual enrollment program with Coppin Academy, and I will be paying, I will be getting paid this summer through Youth Works for taking classes at Coppin. Basically, right now, what the program looked like is, what it looks like is one of the professors from Coppin comes over, he comes in, sits in a room, and we also have another professor here that actually teaches 10th grade English here at Emerson, and she also helps with the dual enrollment program. So I was wondering how my peers over on the East Side would have the similar opportunity that I have, being as though that I'm here. Yes.
You know, those comments deserve a leak and applause. I will tell you, one, the internships, I know for a lot of us up here, internship's been key, and so we're looking to additional opportunities to how we can also make that a reality. But also, the college professor in me loves to see you getting those credits, those classes, and we want to expand that to all parts of the city as well. So then, thank you for lifting that up. As we transition into our agency representatives, we'll first hear from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. So please come forward. Oh, and also, we have Tyler Shnella from the mayor's office of Government Relations who's going to address this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I begin, to the young lady that just testified, Kaia, I do want to connect with you after this because we do have opportunities for our young people who want to have internships. The mayor launched the HBCU Fellowship Program, and it is a paid, year-long opportunity. ADM Assistant Deputy Mayor Lugay is here as well, and we can connect you to that opportunity. Council President Cohen, Chair Conway, Chair Bullock, and members of the committee. For the public, my name is Tyler Shnella. I'm the Deputy Director for Government Relations in the mayor's office. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share information about the administration's Summer Youth Engagement Plan. I also want to acknowledge the significance of where we are today. While I am a City College grad, it is nice to be here in West Baltimore at Emerson High School discussing our plans for young people this summer. A pillar of the Scott administration is prioritizing our youth, and Mayor Scott's charge this summer is clear. Our goal is to ensure that we keep our young people safe, connected, and engaged, and I have to lift up the fact that about two weeks ago, Councilman Torrance, in your district at the park, we had a team party. We had no incidents of violence. Our young people show us time and time again that they are capable of coming together, having fun, and going home. But I also want to be clear that we do have a plan, and what you will hear from Assistant Deputy Mayor Lugay and Director Mavronis shortly represents a continuation and expansion of our efforts over the past two years to support our young people, curate events and opportunities informed by their feedback, keep them safe, and yes, when necessary, hold them accountable if their actions place themselves or others at risk. And to those who say we aren't doing enough, I want to counter that narrative. There's always space for growth, and I have to thank BCYF for stepping up to contribute an additional $2.1 million to get us to $4.6 million for our Summer Funding Collaborative. But let's be clear, this year, the city was faced with an $85 million budget gap, the end of American Rescue Plan Act funding, additional costs from the state, and funding uncertainty from what's happening right now in Washington, DC. But even in the face of that budget gap, the end of ARPA funding, and what's happening in DC, the Scott administration is continuing to invest in our young people. We are making a number of key investments in youth programming, including increasing the overall city's support for our schools by $27 million, allocating $2.4 million to support the opening of two newly renovated rec centers that will come online in fiscal year '26, that is, the Chick Web and Parkview rec centers, and allocating $850,000 for the Be More for Healthy Babies program. And I also have to be clear that we're not doing this work alone. I want to thank all of our city agencies, city schools, BCYF, Baltimore's Promise, BPD, city schools police, and the community-based partners and social workers who are equally committed to this holistic approach. And as I close, to our young people, we see you, we hear you, and we value you, and Mayor Scott and this administration is fully committed to giving you the support and opportunities you deserve this summer. And while some may choose to focus on the negative, we choose to uplift you. We are, as we say in the mayor's office, we are outside summer 2025, and you are not just welcome, you are wanted this summer. Please take full advantage of everything we've created with you and for you this summer. And again, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairs, and I'll turn it over now to Assistant Deputy Mayor Lugay and Director Mavronis.
Good evening, Honorable City Council President, Chairs, and members of the city council, and all of our guests here today. I'm Stephanie Mavronis, Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. My name is Noel Lugay, Assistant Deputy Mayor, Equity, Health, and Human Services.
Let me go back. So just to provide some background and overview here, in the spring of 2023, Mayor Scott committed to mobilizing city resources and developing a comprehensive summer youth engagement strategy after we saw a spike in homicides and non-fatal shooting victims under the age of 18. This integrated Summer Youth Engagement Plan was about prioritizing our youth to ensure their safety and providing alternative options for positive engagement. And so at the end of summer 2023, after implementing what was our first summer of this comprehensive summer youth engagement strategy, Baltimore did see a decrease in violent crime among youth 17 and under. And with the biennial update of Baltimore's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan in spring 2024, Mayor Scott also did something very significant in announcing a dedicated youth justice and violence reduction pillar to solidify this work. For the third consecutive summer, Mayor Scott has mobilized my agency, Monsey, Baltimore City Rec and Parks, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, other partner agencies, and community-based organizations to ensure the full weight of city government is dedicated to supporting our young people this summer. So really, building on those lessons learned, we're continuing and expanding in some ways the integration of safety outreach and engagement through this partnership.
Um, the components of this strategy are outlined in three foundational pieces. Um, first component is engagement, which is the fun, proactive, safe activities for young people to do. Outreach, which is street-level relationship building and redirection from undesired behaviors while making connections to needed services. And then there is the enforcement piece, which is the accountability for young people participating in criminal activity that jeopardizes their safety and that of those of them around them. Overall, the summer youth engagement and strategy has contributed to a 66% reduction in youth as victims of shootings and 31% reduction in youth as victims of aggravated assaults from 2023 to 2024. So we'll start with the engagement compo- component of the summer events. Um, we have outlined three major events that happened throughout the entire summer. The first is a teen pool party that is in conjunction with, uh, Rec and Parks, and those happen on the dates that are listed. We then have the Rock the Block, which is our community engagement, um, block party opportunity that is being in partnership with Moca. They lead that event. And then we have late-night recreation opportunities where nine of our recreation centers will be open every Friday and Saturday until 11:00 PM. This will also be in support with, uh, our BCYF partners and grantees who will be uplifting programming, um, in those late-night recreation centers as well. The following recreation centers will be open until 11:00 PM, um, and they're listed there. I'm not sure I need to run off all of them, but, uh, they, they were the nine that were identified by our leadership at Recreation and Parks as the ones that had the highest levels of engagement, um, in summer 2024. Um, so they continue to uplift these particular, uh, recreation centers in those communities to identify them for late-night recreation opportunities on those Fridays and Saturday nights. Another piece of our engagement is the mobile recreation, which Rec and Parks is now named Rec on the Run. If you see the truck, you know there are just some fun things happening and coming. Um, this is a mobile community asset where what we do is that we focus on meeting the needs of neighborhoods and recreation deserts that, or, or, or neighborhoods that don't have community assets. So these activities happen throughout parks, include sports, natures, arts, crafts, games, um, and special activities. So there are listed, they've already started, um, Montebello was a hit, from what I understand. So we'll be moving, going from April to, um, September with our Rec on the Run opportunities in those communities. Moca will also be supporting, uh, the BCRP, um, opportunities for them to go ahead and mobilize and make sure the word is getting out about the Rec on the Run opportunities. When we talk about Rock on the Block, we have to look a little bit deeper and not just at the idea that we are just having a block party. This was another very intentional opportunity that was led by the Scott administration. We had the opportunity to go ahead and present the top 20, um, communities that had incidences over summer 2022 to summer 2024. Of those top 20 communities, um, these were the ones that were chosen here. Um, so in a response to also our constituents, once, again, we do get a lot of community engagement, we get feedback from the community, and a lot of responses were around the idea that folks wanted to have their communities be highlighted and be able to enjoy the community that they reside in. So there will be a, the Rock the Block opportunities with, um, in part also, including National Night Out. There will be eight sort of block party activations. These will all be in conjunction with Downtown Locker Room, um, and Walmart this year. So we have Brooklyn, Bella Edison, Coldstream Homestead, Montebello, Mondomin, McElderly Park, Sandtown, and Frankfurt. And then we'll also be highlighting two of our newly opened pools in two of those communities as well, um, as a community asset. Okay. Okay. Also, for Youth Works is an engagement component, which is, which a lot of our young people were speaking of. We have Director Garvin and her team leading that charge. And it's in its 51st year, Youth Works continues its commitment to empowering young people by offering Baltimore City residents ages 14 to 21 a five-week summer employment opportunity. Participants gain valuable work experience while earning $15 an hour for up to 25 hours each week. This includes the opportunity to also do some credit recovery opportunities in the summer with city schools. So for summer 2024, 9,553 youth were employed, 770, 747 employer work sites were utilized, 8,214 MTA bus passes were utilized. So that means public transportation is a big key to all of this. For summer 2025, currently, there are 8,500 employment opportunities, 650 employer work sites, and financial literacy offered to all of the youth. Our top employers and philanthropic sponsors are Johns Hopkins, Martin's Catering, Heart Smiles, the Hurry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation, and Annie E. Casey.
Thank you. Um, and just wanted to say about the host of events and, and offer some grounding words here. So the Scott administration, as you heard from, um, Tyler earlier, we feel we have a responsibility as a city government and as a community to wrap our arms around our young people. This strategy is about, um, making sure we're providing those positive opportunities for our youth. Um, but maybe more significantly, I want to mention that the events that you saw in the slides, um, preceding this are events that, um, come out of feedback, um, that we've gotten directly from our young people. And so not just creating those events that we believe young people might like, but making sure we're speaking with our young people, we're understanding the kinds of things they want to do, and also having the diversity of, um, events, activities, um, enrichment, opportunities, um, to match. And so for my part of the strategy, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety, and Engagement really is focusing on the youth safety engagement component of this, um, working together with Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement. Um, we want to make sure that we're not simply criminalizing young people for being outside. Um, we want to make sure our young people, just like anyone else, can, um, enjoy their summer and do that safely. Um, but we also have to make sure we're having that proactive engagement because we do not want to see unnecessary situations escalating to law enforcement where we have an opportunity to redirect. And so just want to cover a few things here. Um, like I mentioned earlier, we're entering the third year of this on-the-ground youth safety engagement. Um, we have staff, typically over 40 staff, in addition to, um, city government staff that are on the ground as well, um, engaging in six core zones between the hours of 8:00 PM and 2:30 AM on Friday and Saturday nights, as well as Sunday nights on holiday weekends. Um, our staff are logging youth engagements and follow-up requests using the data collection form, um, just from our past four weekends. And we've started this activation earlier this, um, this spring, um, which is an expansion from last year. We've already seen about 55 encounters and engagements of young people, and we believe that's an undercount because we're still refining the data collection in the field. Um, really, again, designed to prioritize the safety of our young people. And, and importantly, to Mayor Scott, we want to make direct, direct connections to resources for our youth. If we're talking with a young person who needs a job, if we're talking with a young person who is struggling with housing insecurity, food insecurity, it's the responsibility of our youth engagement teams who are out in the evenings to identify that need and also make a plan for follow-up. And so we've been active since early April. We'll continue through the end of the summer. Um, this 25-week activation this year in 2025 nearly doubles the length of that proactive engagement that we've had in previous years, which has traditionally been about 14 and 15 weeks between Memorial Day and Labor Day. Um, and so really excited about being able to do more of this engagement, knowing that the weather is nice and our young people want to enjoy. And so supporting this, um, year's strategy, um, both our summer youth engagement, as well as having some supplemental support at our events like the pool parties and the block parties, city agencies, which I've already mentioned, For My Kids, the Movement Team, the Peace Team, Redesigning Minds, um, school police, all of these entities play a really critical component. Um, what's really crucial is also that we have people on the ground who, um, some of them have social work skills. Some of them are good deescalators and good violence interrupters. Many of them work within our schools. And so it's not uncommon when we're walking around in the areas that we engage, um, that we're seeing people who, um, we know from our schools were able to have that relationship then and there. Um, and that's been really significant to make those connections and also have credibility on the ground. And so this, this reflects the expanded outreach schedule for this year. Um, again, we started the beginning of April, and we will go through the weekend of September 20th, um, making sure we have a presence, not only through traditional summer break from school, um, but also through some of the many events that we want to make sure our young people also have an opportunity to enjoy. Um, lastly, on this strategy, some of you may have seen the mayor's announcement, um, at B360, which is, which headquarters is now in Harbor Place. Um, we're utilizing them this year as our youth connection center. And so the proximity to Harbor Place, where we already have some engagement teams, um, this youth connection center gives us the chance to, um, if we need to have one-on-one conversations with one or more young people that we need to pull out of a crowd and, and just have that private space to talk, um, it's where we can triage and make some of those connections to needed resources. It's also where young people can wait for their parents and guardians to come pick them up if they need a ride home, or if we need to make arrangements for transportation. And so just want to thank B360 for being such a great partner and opening their space to us this year.
Um, also, going back to the enforcement piece, we want to talk about our partnership with the Baltimore Police Department and the Baltimore School Police to support our young people. Um, we want to offer, again, accountability for those participating in those criminal activities that jeopardize their safety, and obviously for those around them. Um, we understand and realize that, you know, there are going to be times where we, we have to allow the police department to do what they need to do and school police to support us in those efforts. But we always want to, want everyone to understand that we're focusing on the least intrusive and most effective response that is in alignment with our, uh, public, public safety enforcement officers. Building a rapport, deescalating, and using language that supports safety and dignity of our young people are at the core of this program that we are really, really looking forward to just roll out for year three. We would not be able to have seen the success that we have seen thus far without us being able to utilize and lean on relationships with our young people. Lastly, uh, we are building out our bemorethissummer.org website, we are very excited about. Um, one piece, one resounding piece of feedback from our young people and from parents, community members, is that they really wanted one singular place to identify where these resources were, the engagement, the opportunities. How do I sign up? How do I get there? How do I engage with agencies? Um, and we are currently working with our wonderful partners over at the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications to build out an interactive and relatable site for our young people, um, families, parents, and constituents, so that we can have these things here. So, um, it should be pretty good, and goo- good to go to launch by Monday. Um, we have a hard launch to make sure we're good definitely by Memorial Day, which is when we will definitely, we definitely be outside in '25. Um, so we're continuing to build this out, add resources, opportunities, engagement. So, um, you can come holler at us there at the website for all the things. That concludes our presentation.
Oh, thank you. No, but thank you. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna continue on. We have, um, we have several agencies that are, that are listed, um, to, uh, present. Um, we have, we can go in different order, but on our list, we also have the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. We also have Baltimore City Schools and Baltimore's Promise along with the police department. So we can go with the youth, youth fund?
Yeah, let's go with the youth.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. I'm gonna jump right in, but thank you so much for having us. My name is Alicia Lee. I'm the president and CEO of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. Can I let my colleague introduce herself?
I'm Cherie Miller, Director of Grant Making Portfolio for Baltimore Children and Youth Fund.
Next slide. So I'm honored to share how the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund is investing in a brighter summer and a stronger future for Baltimore's young people. BCYF has, was created by Public Referendum, as many of you know, you were there, to center the leadership potential and power of our youth. So some of our impacts over the last few years has been $32 million awarded since 2020, 100-plus organizations that are currently supported in our portfolio, with 80% of them being multi-year grants. The majority of our grantees are Black and Brown grassroots-led organizations. Our grantees directly provide over 17,000 seats throughout the summer and school year. Next slide, please. Sorry, this isn't working. I'll just stick it here. Grantee compliance has increased, next slide, from 30% to 90%, and we have over 700-plus unique individuals who've participated in our capacity-building programs just from 2024 to today. So we prioritize partnerships that are community-centered, culturally relevant, and equity-driven. And our summer strategy for 2025 focuses on joyful, safe, and meaningful experiences while also balancing a vision for year-round continuity in youth development. We're working to ensure that summer is not a seasonal gap, but a springboard for growth, discovery, leadership, and connection for every young person across every neighborhood. This summer, BCYF is investing $9.5 million to expand opportunities for youth across Baltimore. And those key investments include $4.9 million for Youth Works. This is an emergency investment to create 8,500 paid job opportunities for young people. Just a reminder that Youth Works also sustains grassroots summer programs that rely on Youth Works for youth staffing and participation. Youth Works is a critical pipeline for youth employment and community programming, but we have to remember that many grassroots organizations rely on Youth Works to staff their programs and for participation. And so without this investment, many summer opportunities for youth would be at risk. Our emergency investment ensures continuity, strengthening both city infrastructure, yes, but also community initiatives without reducing, um, the BCYF's grassroots funding commitments in FY26. Also, $2.9 million for summer programs through the Summer Funding Collaborative. This allows us to scale support for 47 culturally-rooted community-based organizations. This reflects a $900,000 increase from last year. This is programs that are in the arts and culture, STEM, health and wellness, mentoring, leadership, sports and recreation, outdoor education, neighborhood development, youth civic engagement, you name it. $1.5 million for the Mayor's Office initiatives. This includes $500,000 that's been earmarked to deepen or initiate collaborative partnerships between current BCYF grantees and city agencies this summer, expanding youth access to spaces and services. 137,500 will be reserved for summer arts programming to ensure that young people this summer have access to joyful, affirming artistic experiences. And then 112,500 have been set aside to maintain the shared infrastructure of the Summer Funding Collaborative through Baltimore's Promise with an administrative support fee. Importantly, um, just to note again, that this emergency investment does not reduce our FY26 grant-making budgets for grassroots organizations.
Again, my name is Cherie Moore, but it, the Director of Grant Making Portfolio. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. BCYF holds deep responsibility for stewarding public funds with care and transparency. Compliance is embedded into every stage of the grant lifecycle to ensure public funds are used responsibly, transparently, and in full alignment with city requirements. We maintain a rigorous but supportive compliance framework that includes, monthly, grantees have to submit financial expense reports to us. They are due on the 25th of each month, and we reconcile them and review and approve them within 15 days. These are audit-ready, backed by receipts, and reconciled against their initial approved budgets. Quarterly, they have to submit programming reports to us. These are narrative and outcome-based updates that help us track real progress, not just activity. Annually, they have a set of deliverables as well. We do site visits to ensure that their initial proposal matches what we see on the ground. They have to complete background attestation forms to ensure that their staff, volunteers, contractors get background checks to work around youth. And we do require, um, verification of their insurance. And we know that the city has a number of coverage, um, coverages that the grantees have to maintain, the same as BCYF. We do fund grantees on a two-part disbursement schedule, and the funds are directly tied to compliance. So if you don't do your things, you don't get the money. Grantees receive 50% after all deliverables are submitted and approved. Grantees receive 50% after all deliverables are submitted and approved for the first half of the year. Six months later, they're eligible to receive their second dispersment, and that's after completing any final reports that we require. Our portfolio and compliance teams work hand in hand with grantees, offering technical assistance, help desk, and remediation plans when necessary. Our commitment is clear: to invest in Baltimore's young people with transparency, trust, and community accountability. We can go to the next slide. Beyond funding, we do invest highly in building long-term community capacity. We also provide technical assistance to grantee organizations to ensure compliance without creating barriers. Our success is shown by a 60% percentage point increase in compliance. In one year, our grantee partners have gone from 30% in compliance to over 90% compliance, and that's evident by the technical assistance and capacity building that we provide. This summer, we will add to the 100-plus annual hours of grantee technical assistance and provide a grantee orientation session, technical support opportunities, financial help desk, and one-on-one support. This is in addition to the program officers that we have, currently five of them on staff doing one-on-one check-ins and the site visits as mentioned earlier. In addition, this summer, BCYF is proud to convene citywide leaders and community members for brainstorming sessions as we launch Baltimore's first-ever Youth Master Plan, a strategic blueprint that will uplift youth voices and define a shared vision for youth success across every neighborhood. These supports strengthen both the immediate delivery of summer programs and the sustainability of our community partners' work year-round.
Excellent. And so looking forward, we also want to share some recommendations for strategies to maximize Baltimore's impact on youth. First up is to align investments with community and youth-driven priorities, making sure that we're using the developing Baltimore Youth Master Plan and continuous youth engagement strategies to drive efforts. To enhance communication with youth and families by the creation of a centralized, youth-friendly summer portal, exciting to hear that the mayor's office has taken that on this summer a bit. And to create that centralized portal is a really critical component of being able to partner with youth ambassadors even for outreach. Streamlining space and transportation access, so maintaining a public summer space match registry, coordinating youth-centered transportation supports to overcome access barriers, especially for transit-challenged neighborhoods and communities. And finally, to simplify and strengthen the grant-making process for summer funding, to shorten and simplify the applications so that they can be more tailored to grassroots organizations, to establish transparent feedback loops so all applicants have an understanding of the funding decisions and pathway for growth, and to announce grant decisions no later than December 15th annually to support stronger programmatic planning. And finally, to support year-round youth engagement, to design summer funding strategies that extend relationships, learning, and youth leadership development beyond the summer months, to prioritize intentional outreach to disconnected youth specifically through interest-driven, culturally-responsive programming. Next slide. This summer for us is defined by joy, curiosity, and connection. Baltimore Children and Youth Fund has made investments that are rooted in the potential power and leadership of Baltimore's young people. Together, we're co-creating a city where youth are free to explore, express, lead, and dream big. And together, we're building a more just, creative, and abundant Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All right. Next up, we have Baltimore City Schools.
Good evening, Council President and our two chairs and representatives from the city council. It's wonderful to be here with you this evening, contributing to this discussion and the many partners that we have in the room that we have already heard from. I want to thank the young people from Edmondson West Side in particular for just strong testimony that I know will only continue throughout the evening. We are proud of you all. By way of getting started, by way of getting, well, I'll go, I guess, to the second slide. I'm not sure what I'm doing. There we go. Thank you. I don't know if I'm controlling or someone else is. But with regard to this summer, I just want to point out some of the context in which some of our earlier testimony took place. And that is that with the summer, with the sunset of Essar funds this summer, as we have been communicating basically for the last two to three years, we do know that some of those funds have been reduced. You can see here what that looks like. Hello, Councilwoman Ramos. Good to see you as well, ma'am. And you'll see that our, though with that, we're very excited about the ability to still provide robust programming this summer. You'll see the dates here, five weeks, Monday through Thursday. And you will see that the length of time, June 30th through July 31st. I want to welcome the public, the council, to also check out our website, which we have had up since April, for additional opportunities. I think the overarching message for summer learning in 2025 is that we will still have 12,000 student seats available for this summer. We'll have over 20 district-led programs and six externally-led programs. In developing this summer, we took into account, like many here, the programmatic attendance. So we took a look at what attendance looks like across different programs, clearly the fiscal impact, student demographics, as we made decisions around which summer programs to prioritize. We also aligned our summer learning initiatives with our state's pre-K through 3 literacy policy. As this council knows, the schools in Baltimore City, we experienced the second-largest growth in literacy in the nation post-pandemic, and so we are really focusing on making sure we continue that trajectory. And then again, leveraged our demographic data in collaboration with some of our partners in the room to make sure that we had placement of summer sites in a way that would ensure equitable access for students across the city. So we're very excited. I won't read the slide to you, but you'll see here just a sampling of some of what we will have available for Baltimore City public school students. You'll see everything from our access to algebra, our camp curiosity for our pre-K. So from pre-K through 12, we'll have offerings. We're very excited. About a year or two ago, we began our first summer programming in CTE and having internship opportunities, including our middle-school career exploration, which I know a number of council members, as well as members of our public, have requested and been excited about. I know the council president and our mayor are really interested and committed to expanding, and so we're going to use our summer to do that. And then, as always, our enrichment opportunities that our young people, and we heard testimony today, some of the things that a number of our families would not be able to offer just due to, you know, their family finances and commitments. We are really proud that we'll be bringing back some favorites like our Spanish theater camp for many of our multilingual learner families. There we go. Back one? Thanks. In terms of our externally-led summer programs, again, the full list of programs are on our website, but just a sampling here, some of what was already highlighted by the mayor's office. B360 is one of our strong partners. K through 12, linking dirt bikes and STEM education, all the way to some of the partners you heard from, like the Elevate Freedom School and the ever-popular ALE Dance Camp. Again, this is just a survey, but please go to our website and feel free to make sure to forward that website link to any constituents who may ask. Next, we're also very excited to continue the momentum from our credit recovery programs, which we expanded for the first time a number of years ago, and we are seeing it generate increased opportunities for our young people to graduate, to be able to get credits over the summer. There's a wide range of courses that you can see here, and we're very pleased with the 7,400 seats that will be offered for our young people across the city. You'll see here that this is an out-of-school time opportunity for students to retake a course in which they were not successful. So we are using summer as a way to keep and get our young people on track to graduation. Next slide. Our extended school year is very important because it reflects our commitment to extended school year services, particularly for our students with disabilities. You'll see some of the programs here run everything from early learning to our life skills students, to our deaf and hard-of-hearing programming. Our Summer Arts for Learning Academy Sala, which was very popular, is expanding to four sites this summer, which will mean 25 classrooms of opportunity for young people across the city. Next slide. You've heard a great deal this evening already of one of the proudest partnerships we have, YouthWorks, as I believe the council president noted, one of the largest student employment opportunities in the country. I can tell you from my superintendent colleagues across the country, there are very few other urban areas that have offered this many opportunities for this long for young people to be employed. We're very excited that we can partner YouthWorks opportunities with our CTE sites, our multiple school-based sites, and our district credit recovery at one end, which I just described, all the way to the AP Academy, which is being used to fuel record-high enrollment and testing numbers, particularly for African-American, our Black students, and our Latino students across the district. We're at record highs in the number of our young people who are enrolling and testing in those college-level courses. And this opportunity in the summer means that our young people don't have to choose between extra study over the summer or getting a job. It partners with both, so we're very proud, again, to partner with the city, with the mayor's office of employment development on that. Next slide. One more. There you go. And then, just because we know that food insecurity continues to be a challenge throughout our city, I think it's just important for the public as well as the city council to know that we will continue to have open sites for young people to receive meals over the summer. You'll see last summer, 118 schools offered a summer meals program, and just under half of those were school-based programs, and over half were planned by city schools at the district level. We will continue to offer. You'll see some of the participation rates there. And that ends my presentation. So thank you.
No, thank you, Dr. Santalisis, for such a comprehensive presentation, as usual. So much appreciated. We'll now move on to Baltimore's Promise.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julia Vias. I'm the chief executive officer for Baltimore's Promise. Thank you to the city council and especially Councilmen Bullock and Conway for co-hosting this important conversation. As a member of the city council's president's transition committee, I'm very excited to see the council in the community in action. And Councilman Bullock, we just want to say, after a long wait, Baltimore's Promise is now officially in your district as we moved into the factory on Calhoun Street, so we're very excited to be in your neighborhood. For those that don't know, Baltimore's Promise is a collective impact organization here in Baltimore focused on improving outcomes for children and youth and young adults 0 to 24. One of the most powerful and often underappreciated tools we have to improve those outcomes is summer. For me, I love summer. I started working at age 14 for Baltimore City Recreation and Parks and spent five summers as a lifeguard at Clifton Park Pool. Summer taught me responsibility, leadership, and how to show up for my community. And now, as a mom, I spend a good chunk of the year helping my own kids figure out what they're doing this summer, and my oldest will happily be a youth worker for the third year in Baltimore this year.
Good evening. I'm James Sadler. I'm the senior director of actionable data, and I work alongside Julia at Baltimore's Promise. For me and my youth, summer programming allowed me to come out of my shell and learn the social skills that I use every day in my work. I'm currently a proud resident of Highland Town in District 1, and though my two-year-old doesn't quite fit in the Enoch Pratt Library Summer Break Baltimore T-shirts, we take advantage of the events and free reading materials every year. Like Julia said, we're here today to talk about summer not as a nice-to-have, but as a critical piece of the youth opportunity puzzle, especially in a city with over 170,000 young people between the ages of 0 and 24. Summer is a chance to create joy, safety, learning, income, enrichment, and it has ripple effects that touch academics, mental health, economic mobility, and even public safety. That's why Baltimore's Promise has made summer such a priority in our work. Next slide, please. Thank you. Summer has been studied, and the research is in. We know that for every $1 invested in summer and after school, at least $3 is saved in long-term costs, things like academic support, public health, and public safety. But beyond the numbers, we just know this from a human perspective. Young people need time to learn, explore, create, try new things, fail, laugh, and grow, and summer gives them that chance. So we're not here to debate the value of summer. We're here because we believe it's time to invest in it strategically and consistently.
Next slide. And I think we've heard this today, but Baltimore is a national model for summer. Most other places in the country are looking to us for the leadership of the work over the last decade from the Wallace Foundation investing 10 years ago in Baltimore building its summer ecosystem. As you heard from others, the Baltimore Summer Funding Collaborative is a critical piece of the puzzle, but what's most important about the collaborative is hundreds of community members, parents, and young people are the ones who are deciding where to allocate the resources in our city. And for the last three years, in partnership with the mayor's office, all of our cultural partners and city agencies have been coming together to share data and expand opportunities for kids in Baltimore. And this summer, Baltimore will have the opportunity to be one of the smartest cities in the country when it comes to understanding the impact of summer investment and the long-term outcomes on students.
As you can see in this slide, this is truly a cross-sector team effort, and it has to be. We have over 170,000 young people in this city, and summer can't rest on one agency or one funder. It's a shared responsibility among all of us. But here's the reality check in the next slide, please. This year, we're facing a potential loss of up to 12,000 summer opportunities at a conservative estimate. That's a sharp drop, and it's only part of the picture. To truly meet the need, we'd have to scale past 40,000 opportunities a year, and we're not there yet. It's also important to note that of those 40,000, not all opportunities are the same. Youth and families want more full-day comprehensive opportunities, and within the 40,000, there are still opportunities that are half-day or only a few hours a day, which are still good and useful for young people but do not meet the full needs.
Next slide. So why this change? We just heard from partners all across the city. What we know is that we've seen progress. We've been able to build a very strong system in the city of Baltimore, but it's a puzzle piece, and it takes all of us. And it is always a shifting sort of map of how we come together and make that happen. I won't reiterate what we just heard from Dr. Santalisis, but what's important to know is that we, as a city, can't depend on a pandemic to be what buoys our system of opportunities for young people. Next slide.
These cuts that we're talking about will hit youth who have been historically neglected by public and private systems the hardest, especially those who rely on schools for stability and support. But it's also important to note that older youth, teens preparing for adulthood, are especially at risk. YouthWorks has made Baltimore, as we've talked about many times already tonight, a national leader in high school age engagement. Partners like our friends at the Youth Fund and City Schools have doubled down in recent years on their own older youth investment, aware at huge risk of losing momentum if we don't act now to ensure this population does not carry the greatest burden of these funding changes.
Next slide. And there is good news to report. So we heard from some partners today in the room that there have been increases since Baltimore's Promise first alerted the city in April to the potential 12,000 decrease. Obviously, we've heard from many partners for many months that this is not a new event. We knew this was coming. We knew the end of Essar dollars were going to hit. But Baltimore City was the most prepared to quantify that number because... to quantify that number because of that collective work you've seen happening over the last decade. So what we've been able to quantify since April is that about 4,600 additional summer opportunities have been added to the pot. We've seen 1,500 additional seats coming in from the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. The Family League of Baltimore just recently made announcement for 1,200 additional summer seats, and Baltimore City Public Schools increased their earlier projection by over 1,000 seats. And we've also seen private partners come in to do investment with Arts for Learning to help them close the 900-seat gap. Next slide. Still a lot of ways to go. As we heard from James, 40,000 seats isn't enough for our city. We have 170,000 young people. We often hear narratives that kids don't want to work, they don't want to be engaged, they don't want to take advantage of opportunities. What we know this year is for Youth Works, even beyond the 8,500 seats that they'll be able to offer, 4,500 other young people in our city completed the application, completed all the steps, and are ready to work and ready to engage in our city. There are over 6,549 youth that could still be involved in a summer program this summer if we were able to reinvest in the Summer Funding Collaborative and fund the programs that young people have already selected. Every one of the programs eligible here, parents and community have been at the table to make those decisions. And what we heard as recently as Monday is in our communities that have high rates of immigrant and refugee families, we are seeing lower enrollment in those communities. And so making sure that those families know, and those young people know, that Baltimore is still a place for their children to have a safe and healthy summer is a critical priority.
So we've heard a lot of testimony and talk, especially from us, too, about this upcoming summer and what we need to advocate for, but this cannot be an annual crisis. Summer should not be an annual scramble. We have to do more to close the gap this year, but we also have to build a sustainable year-over-year system that every young person in Baltimore can count on. Baltimore is the most-ready jurisdiction in the state of Maryland to do it. We provided everyone a data handout with QR codes, looks like this, and we also have some available at the front for the wonderful people behind me, to access summer-wide, citywide, excuse me, summer data tools developed by Baltimore's Promise in partnerships with public agencies, researchers, youth, and families. We can make a better and more informed decisions now, not just about summer, but for all year.
Last slide. So again, we just want to thank you all for your time and for bringing this conversation to the forefront. As James said, you know, we're advocating here today around summer because that's where the conversation started, but what we want to see is enough opportunities for all young people in our city year-round. We hear that, you know, Baltimore is on the come-up, and we love that. We can't do it if we're not centering young people in the future vision of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our presentations from our agency and partners. We're going to open up the floor to questions from the committee. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. President to kick us off.
There we go. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairs. So just quickly to the young people in the room, I want you to know this whole hearing is about you and opportunities to strengthen your summer, and what I hope you appreciate is that every single partner in this room that you've heard of is dedicated to making it happen, and that Baltimore truly is a city that cares deeply about young people. And I want to appreciate all the different partners that you heard from today. The mayor's team, I know, put a lot of work into their summer engagement plan, city schools, the Youth Fund, Baltimore's Promise, and it's impressive when you see it all in front of you. And we know that there is a gap in support, and so what I want to do with my question is just try to get as clear as I can on the numbers from last year and then this year so that we can understand exactly what it looks like. So I wanted to just ask the different institutions, and I'm going to start with the mayor's office, particularly for Youth Works. If you could just confirm, what I saw on your slide was, in 2024, there were 9,553 slots for Youth Works. This summer, we're looking at 8,500 slots. Could you just, someone from the mayor's office, could you confirm the numbers? I see Director Garvin or Director...
Just to be clear, any directors that are here to represent the offices will be speaking on behalf of the questions that you ask.
Great.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Matt Garvin, Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development.
And hi, I'm Donnie S. Brown, Assistant Director, Chief of Youth Services.
And I just want to reiterate, I want to make sure I understand the question you're asking about the accuracy of the two numbers that were presented.
Yeah, just want to understand. I'm going to go through the different agencies, because I want to get to where we're at currently and where, could we be, where should we be as we head into the summer? So just wanted to understand, how many young people were in Youth Works from last year, and then how many are going to be in Youth Works this year?
I think it's important to recognize with Youth Works, every single year, the number of applications continues to increase. I think because we were in an interesting time, because we had ARPA money available, we were able to offer to all of those who had completed applications to job opportunities. So I believe this year, we're at about, let me see the number. Thank you. We're at about 13,000 applications submitted, which is a little bit over what it was last year, but keep in mind, this is a job opportunity, so there are young people that apply for this opportunity, they apply for other opportunities, not everyone takes it, but we get a significant amount of applications, and it's all depending on the amount of funding that we have, how many jobs we're able to offer. Going to this year, based upon the funding that's available, we'll be able to offer 8,500, we'll be able to employ 8,500 young people.
Understood. And how many did we employ last year, 2024?
Last year, I believe it was 9,000.
Last year, we were able to offer employment to 9,313 youth, and out of that number, about 8,250 actually completed the five-week session.
Got it. Much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City schools, do you all have data on last year and this year? How many young people?
Yes, sir. So last year, we offered approximately 20,000 seats. This year, as I noted, it'll be closer to 12,500. And then, in terms of the young people who actually took the seats, which I'm sure you might also want to know, it's about a little over 19,000.
Got it. Thank you very much, Dr. Santelisis. Baltimore's Promise?
So last year, in the Summer Funding Collaborative, we served around 7,500 young people. This year, our initial projections were 3,000 young people, thanks to the additional contributions from the Baltimore City Youth Fund that has increased to around 4,500. That's, as I said in my testimony, these projections are conservative. One of the reasons for that is when a program applies for the Summer Funding Collaborative, they don't just rely on funding from us, so they give us their projections based on if they're fully funded. As we heard tonight, there's a lot of struggles around, not just from the Summer Funding Collaborative, which is why I think that's a little bit conservative for right now.
Understood. Thank you. And then, the Youth Fund, if you could just share last year's number, this year's number in terms of summer youth slots?
Sure. I don't have summer youth slots for the summer. We funded last year through the Summer Funding Collaborative, and we'll, again, saw our numbers represented there, but I did provide the number of programs. So last year, we funded 39 programs, and this year, we'll be working with 47.
Got it. Do you know approximately, or as close to accurately as possible, how many young people for those various programs?
I'd have to rely on the data and expertise from our partners at Baltimore's Promise. I'm happy to get that information and send it back over to the committee.
Got it. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the partners. So again, going into this summer, we know that there is a gap, and it's imperative to me, as the council president, and to my colleagues on the city council, that we do everything we can to close it. I think it is clearly, there are external challenges facing our city, and we should expect in the next year after this and the year after that, that we will continue to see pressure from Washington, D.C., coming down on cities like Baltimore. But I do want to thank all of the partners for their collaboration, and I'm looking forward to working directly with the mayor's office, city schools, and everyone else to make sure all of our young people have what they need this summer. Thank you, Mr. Real quick, Lucinda, could you, what's the, let me get our chart back. What's the final number, one of the council members over there, if you want to? Sorry, we can come back if you want to. Thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Chairs.
All right. Thank you. I didn't, I should have known, coming to a school, I'd be doing some math. I appreciate the question. It's, you know, one of the ones that I certainly had as well, so I appreciate you getting to that. I've got a slightly different question around the funding. So on March 27th, the mayor announced that in fiscal year 2026, the Youth Fund would provide $6 million to support Youth Works to fund 8,500 slots for Baltimore City Youth. Youth Works is a great program. We all love it. We all support it, and of course, we want to see more of it. Earlier this week, the Youth Fund announced that it'd be making a, quote, "emergency investment" of $4.9 million into Youth Works, which is, of course, less than the initial $6 million that we discussed. So it appears that we found some additional funding, which is good news. First, I want to ask for MOED, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, where did the additional funding come from, and are there any additional gaps created from that funding in other parts of your programming?
I just want to make sure I'm clear about the question. You said the amount from the Children and Youth Fund was 4.8?
4.9.
4.9. And then, the other amount is the general fund. There's always a combination of different funding for Youth Works. So there is funding that we receive from the federal government, from the Department of Labor, the Department of Justice, HHS. There's funding that we receive from the state, and then there's funding that we receive from philanthropic organizations, which we go out and we raise ourselves, and then there's, and then there's funding that is received from the city. And so what is available to us now was an increase in our city general funds and a decrease in the amount of funding that we're receiving from the Children and Youth Fund.
I see. We just took it out of general funds, so the general pot, and prioritize this. Got it. Thank you. My next question is for the Youth Fund, as a, to circle back on that. So with the transfer of the funds to Youth Works, does that then create a gap for other funds? Are there other expenditures that we won't necessarily be able to cover? How does it affect the rest of our program?
Does it create a gap for the city?
Yes, for the work that we typically do with the Youth Fund.
No, it doesn't. So there will be no change in the fiscal year 2026 budget for grassroots organizations, for the Community Accountable Fund, or for the Align Grant Making Fund, and we'll be presenting that budget on June 10th to the public for feedback, and then the board will vote on the final budget on the 17th of June.
Just to make sure I understand you correctly, you're saying that moving the $4.9 million does not affect anything?
It doesn't affect the grant-making dollars that are going out for the grassroots fund, the Community Accountable Fund, or the Align Grant Making Fund. It will not impact those dollars at all.
Okay. Where does it come from?
It's coming from our fund balance.
Can you explain?
Sure. So when BCUF was created, that, right at the time when the vote occurred, there was a running dollar amount that began to culminate in the fund balance that you guys are holding. You guys are holding those funds for us, and so there has been a strategic thought around how to disperse those dollars over time slowly. So we do spend about $6 to $7 million of the dollars that we're accumulating there for a couple of years. We're not going to just disperse all of it at one time. That's not reasonable, and also, we want to think about more strategic investments. So part of BCUF's charge does include, of course, providing direct grant-making dollars to programs, but it also includes uplifting the youth development ecosystem, and so that can't be made by just programmatic grants. So part of the plan this year, as we go through our community assessment process, which is due every three years, and developing the Youth Master Plan, is to strategize with a citywide effort around what to do with the dollars that are in that general fund. So those dollars are housed with the city, and we will be sharing with you what we'd like to do with them from a collective place.
Got it. So just to make sure I understand you correctly, this is coming from like the principal balance that creates, from its interest, the balance that we typically pay out every year?
I don't think there's any interest that we're receiving, so it's just for us, a fund balance that sits, and it does not collect interest for us, but it may for the city.
All right. And, you know, I think we, Baltimore's Promise was talking a little bit about that 12,000 number.
Yes.
It sounds like it's, we've got a little closer to tackling that 12,000 number.
And we have a $900,000 increase this year, so the 12,000 number, that's not related to our funding.
Right. I tried to do some quick math myself when I was working it out. It worked out to be about 7,400 seats that we're roughly thinking about, and so when we think about the Youth Fund, and when we think about how we prioritize it, we're now thinking about those remaining seats and how we can attack that over time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to hand off to the committee. We can just actually, before I go down the line, I want to make sure we tackle the councilman whose home we are visiting. So I'm going to start off, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, with Mr. Gray. Councilman Gray, you got any questions?
Oh, and before we jump into questions, you might have noticed each of us have asked a question, a single line of questioning with a follow-up, so we're going to afford that opportunity, just so we don't...
And one other note, I know it was mentioned in passing, but do want to note that we are joined by Councilman Rhodat Ramos of the 14th District, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chairs, and for everyone here, welcome to the great 8th District and to the amazing Emerson Westside High School. I have a question for the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. According to the data provided by the city, prior to this hearing, 9,837 youth who participated in their summer job or internship facilitated by the city in 2024, that was the participation? A total of 10 were from District 8, and from my neighbor over in District 9, there were just seven. And by comparison, the next lowest was 246 from District 11. Similarly, there were 6,719 youth served in 2023. A combined total of seven came from District 8 and District 9. If this data is correct, could you please go into what is being done to increase the participation in these districts, and why are so few of my young kids participating in these programs?
Sure. I think one of the things that we're doing, of course, and I'm very excited that you're here and that you're new, that we provide an opportunity to meet with all of you and talk to you about what's happening in your district and ask for that support from you to be able to share that information out, but also, at the same time, we are very equitable in the way that we share the information out to all of our young people, and all of the schools, through the radio, through the television, through every sort of social media, we want to make sure that all young people... We want to make sure that all young people know about the opportunity. We also make sure that the period of time which young people can apply is extensive. It's from January to April. We want to make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for young people to know about the application process and give them a lot of time to apply. We also recently implemented a new initiative, which is a career coaching in schools. So we have career coaches in all of the middle schools and all of the high schools that are working within your district to work with young people in schools. So there are a lot of things that we're doing to, to help young people and parents know about the program. And we're open to, you know, any other opportunities that we can to work with you or others to increase the, the number of young people who are in your district who are involved in Youth Works.
I appreciate that answer and I would just ask for just increased focus on our two districts in particular. I understand that, you know, things happen, but when there's that big of a gap, there has to be intentionality behind it. And so whatever you need from me, I don't want to speak for Councilman Balak, but whatever you need from him, please let us know because I really want to increase the participation from the kids in this area because oftentimes, they are the ones that feel like they're overlooked. A lot of our communities are middle neighborhoods. They're not the worst, they're not the best. And so they don't have the access of resources and because they don't lack as much as other areas, they are not just given the opportunities right in their neighborhood. And so I would just ask for more intentionality. I'm more than happy to work with you. And if you hear that kid in the back, that's my son. I think, I think he wants to help as well, so.
I appreciate your partnership and we, we do look forward to working closely with you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Gray, for speaking for me because you, you're spot on. One of the things I want to also note is that when we start talking about some of the disparities in, in our city, it's also connected with some of the unfortunate statistics we also see in our city. So if we want to solve our problems, we have to address them on the front end. So very well said. Other members of either committee who have questions? Let's see, Councilman, let's go with Councilman Blanchard and then we'll go with Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, a lot of the conversation today ended up being focused on closing the gaps and the unanticipated gaps in spots and a lot of this coming, having to do with the federal environment and all this situation. I know we did have the opportunity to hear some about the actual programming itself. And I know, I think that was more of the, the, the meetings we had in advance of this covered more of what the different agencies are doing, you know, the rock the block and all these, all these other different programming efforts. So just something I've been wondering about, Baltimore's Promise had a point in your slide, you said, and I quote, "This summer, the youth data hub will produce one of the country's first comprehensive integrated data reports on summer outcomes." And so I guess this is directed to Baltimore's Promise, but something I'm just thinking about in general is, how are you going to measure the outcomes and what outcomes are you going to measure? And to put it bluntly, how will we be able to look back on the summer and be able to assess if the plan was effective or not?
Thank you for the question. I'll start with what we do now in terms of measuring quality. We measure quality in our summer funding collaborative a couple of different ways. One of them is that every single application is reviewed by a community member, either an older youth or a parent and caregiver of a younger youth. And their review of the application is, determines 50/50% in hand with funders in terms of what programs actually get funded. We also have youth surveys at the end of each program where we try to understand whether youth are enjoying the program and what they're getting out of it. Your question goes to something much deeper though, which is outcomes and which is how can we integrate data between institutions? Something like this wasn't possible due to the legal landscape in Maryland before the Baltimore City Youth Data Hub was established in 2022, which allowed for the integration of data between Baltimore's Promise, the City of Baltimore, and city schools. So right now, we are, as my colleague Julia said, we're working on our first use case, which is around summer engagement ecosystem. It's the first time that individual level data from these different institutions are being integrated for this purpose and intend to find, release our initial findings in the fall. So the outcomes that we're looking at include, we talked a lot about capacity today, so like 40,000 seats, but we're unsure of exactly how many youth are being served and how many duplications there are between different agencies. We'll be able to answer that and we'll be able to better understand outcomes around attendance, around grades, around graduation, things like that. It's going to be an iterative process. Summer doesn't go away, so we're going to be doing this year after year and it's only going to get better and better because through the youth data hub, we're also increasing the data capacity and quality of our institutions as well.
Sorry, I was struggling with the microphone. And then when will that report be available?
So our initial, we're hoping to release that in the fall of 2025. Part of our community governance model includes a community research and action committee, which is 14 residents of Baltimore City, half of them young people. So we're working with them to ensure that the findings from this are as accessible as possible to a wide array of audiences, not just you, but community members as well.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. And I, I think, you know, I'd like to encourage, encourage you guys, and this sounds like a wonderful plan, and as much as it's possible to, to have that data available, maybe earlier in the fall, because once we get into, you know, November timeframe and whatnot and people stop caring about that time of the year until it's time to start caring about it again in the upcoming spring. And I also, I just want to, we've talked a lot about the employment opportunities and whatnot, but to steer it back towards the summer youth engagement strategy, maybe this question is for Monsi, but the same question of, of knowing, you know, what outcomes are you looking to measure? And then how do you determine the success of all of the, I guess, the non-employment-focused efforts?
So just on the safety side, which I'll speak to, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague, the Assistant Deputy Mayor. So we will be, we will be collecting data, as I mentioned, about the number of engagements, encounters, the requests for follow-up services, what the outcome of those specific requests are, and any other data of note. In the past two years, we have worked with evaluation partners who not only look at the impacts for overall public safety, looking at the violent crime numbers among youth, but also doing some evaluation of the overall strategy. Did we actually reach young people? Were we able to keep them safe? And what were the outcomes? Were there any transformations that came from those connections that we were able to make from resources? So we'll be looking to, to repeat that again this summer on the safety engagement piece specifically, but I know part of your question was about kind of the broader strategy, which I can let Noel speak to.
Thank you, Director Mavronis. In addition to those pieces of data, I mean, I want to say that every time that we have an opportunity to reach our young people or engage them, Councilmen, we actually have survey data. So every time our young people register for any type of event, we have a survey of seven questions that we ask them about what it is they want to see, any services, any additional resources that they would like to have, as well as when we have our Rock the Block opportunities, we have families, families, family members, young people all register. And when they do that, Mocha creates a survey. We create a database in those specific communities so that we can identify how to better serve and support our young people and their families. And that also pours directly into how we start to strategically think about partnerships and what they want. So I can think of one immediate response to the, the survey data we had last year. Our communities wanted fresh groceries and an opportunity to have good, fresh food. That was one response. So this year, we are partnering with Walmart and Walmart is providing groceries to all of our families and all of our Rock the Block opportunities. Another thing that they were looking at, that they wanted was some like more health services. So we're working with the Health Department to provide health services to, to be at our Rock the Block locations and also working with Care First. And we're in talks of having those things. So we look at a lot of qualitative data so that we can make sure that when we build out the strategy year over year, that we are focusing on those three pillars, but we're also providing resources and support for our young people when we interact with them.
So the safety and crime numbers and whatnot make, I mean, being able to evaluate that and everything makes, makes sense to me. I guess, knowing, knowing whether it was success, success or not, but towards the survey data, the more qualitative approach that the Assistant Deputy Mayor mentioned, what does, it's, it's the Monday after Labor Day, you're looking at the data, you determine it's a success or needs improve, I mean, always needs to improve, right? But a success or not, based off of what exactly?
So the, the biggest thing is that we look at is, did, how many, how many times do we have to either divert or bring young people in? How many occasions do we have to have young people interact with law enforcement? How many times were we able to have successful encounters where we were able to, you know, reroute our young people, especially the people who are underage or aren't engaging any activities that are again, violent or disruptive to them? So we use all of that data and we actually have a meeting every Tuesday that we talk about what the weekend looked like, what areas maybe we, maybe hotspots that maybe we didn't pay attention to. We work with partners like Lieutenant Rotel, Major Jenkins, we work with BPD, school police to talk about, to literally have an immediate huddle around how can we redeploy our resources for the following weekend? So we don't wait until, you know, whenever, to your point, we wait until literally that that weekend after, we talk about what our deployment strategy looked like, what engagement looked like. And really, success is zero for us. And I know that Deputy Director Schneller talked about this. When it comes to youth engagement events, we're looking at incidences with, we're looking at activities with no incidences, no opportunities for young people to engage in, in behavior that would, you know, have them interact with law enforcement. That's a big piece, but also how many opportunities did we have to reroute young people? It's not always about like, not, something not happening, but when something did happen, how was our response? What was our response time? How do we galvanize our resources to get back to those young people? We also have people like Ms. Tracy Chief Eastep, who on Mondays, follow up, does follow-up calls with those young people that we interact with. So we consider that also a success case. So last weekend, I'll say around 1:00 in the morning, we're engaging with four or five young men and as, as well as his expecting girlfriend. He wants another job. His friend wants another job. He asks us to come see us at Nugget Donuts. Another young man wants another job. He calls for his, his girlfriend to come over, who was also pregnant and down at Rashfield at 1:00 in the morning. And we talk to them about resources. We build relationships and now we're going to give her some maternal care and resources because she's only had one visit. The baby is due in September. We're going to give them housing. We're going to go ahead and make sure he has a job. So it is the success cases and the ability to redirect our young people, the ability to say, okay, we didn't outreach, but were we able to actually connect with them the following week? But then also when we have large scale events with our 1,500 young people in Drew Hill Park with zero incidences, that is also success. We look at the strategy, we look at what we did, what worked and what didn't. And that is also something that again, we use into, to weave into the fabric of how we build out the strategy.
All right. I, I want to, I think we'll get to the bottom.
Yeah, that was, that was very thorough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate you both. Mr. President, you had a, you had a quick follow-up. I know you've been waiting, Pace.
Just, nope, no, you're good. Appreciate you both. I'm going to have to leave a little bit early, have a interview with the former President Obama's Education Secretary from back when we had an education department in this country. So apologies for having to leave early. I do want to just thank the two chairs for convening this hearing. I think it's really important to, as a value statement, do this work in city schools. It is about the young people. I also really want to thank Council Services. This was a big production, as well as city school staff, as well as Charm TV and all the other folks that were here. The last thing I want to say, just in appreciation of the level of collaboration among all the partners and among these two committees, is we are all committed to closing the gap and to making sure our young people have a great, safe summer. And it is going to be a collaborative endeavor. And so I look forward to continuing the conversation. And again, I thank all the folks who showed up today. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Before we go to Councilmember Ramos, I have one quick, broad question if I think for everybody. Honestly, Dr. Santalisis.
I don't know if you want me to answer the question. I really don't need to, but I did, I wanted to make sure for Councilman's question about evaluation from the city schools.
Right. So, so no, this would be helpful because I was actually, you could answer part of this question I'm also going to ask. So part of the question that was previously asked was around evaluation. Just for everyone's edification, in a prior committee hearing for education, youth of older adults, we had one that was around attendance, but we also delved into the issues of transportation. And so I do want to touch upon that in terms of some of the gaps or some of the challenges we have in terms of getting young people, whether it be to work, to credit recovery programs and the like. So if, if folks who presented today can address that, I know Dr. Santalisis, I know you have some information around that as well as the evaluation. So you can come forward and others, please. And then we'll go to Councilmember Ramos.
Sure. No, thank you. And I just wanted to respond to the question. The first piece, though I do, I was remiss earlier, we have with us our newest Commissioner for Baltimore City Public Schools, Commissioner Simmons is here with us this evening. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged him as well. Just quickly, on the point of evaluation, we actually run an evaluation every year for our summer program. Because we're city schools, we are actually focused on academic outcomes as well. So we actually see no drop-off in students. For example, when we compare students who are below grade level at the end of the year to when they come back, but that's overall, there's really no difference between, but what we do see is variability by program. So there are certain programs that, that do actually see gains in student achievement by BOI and others that do not. But again, it's highly variable and the researcher in me would be remiss in calling that causal. It's what we call associated. So that we do. And then the other piece that I think is important, the place where we definitely see impact is in credit recovery. We know that based on the numbers over the past two to three years, we have hundreds more students who are graduating over summer as a result of the summer credits that they are taking. So that's part of our evaluation. And then Chair Bullock, to your question quickly about transportation, I think like everything else in the city when it comes to young people and frankly, citizens, transportation can be a barrier. I know Baltimore's Promise has done more analysis on this with regards to summer, but I do think it drives how we plan for summer programming and how we try to make sure that we have programming available in a variety of geographic locations in the city because we know that it is very difficult for a number of young people to be able to, to basically travel across the city. So it's part of our geographical planning, it's part of how we work alongside Youth Works for the employment end of things. But that would be my, my general answer to that, sir.
No, thank you. And then for, for Youth Works, just a quick follow, in MOED, I know that there is the, the option and this offering of transit passes. Can you talk about the utilization of those charm passes versus those who are being privately dropped off or worked or, or walking or going on their own devices? I mean, are, are folks utilizing that as a, as a, as an added-on benefit?
We found over the past several years since we've had the partnership with the MTA Associate, with the Mass Transit Association, that the majority of those youth workers who are offered the opportunity to get a charm card, they will take advantage of that and use it throughout the five weeks of their employment. So last year was a little over 8,000 that actually took advantage of the charm card.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Much, much appreciated. So we'll go with, let's see, Councilmember Parker, then we'll go to Torrance, then we'll go back to Ramos. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's good to be here with you all. Thank you, all of our partners, for a really important conversation this evening. I wanted to spend some time diving into engagement and outreach related to, especially to our Latina young people across the city, certainly in the 1st District, but lots of different communities around the city. I'd like to start on the outreach sides, I think specifically for Monsi here, that the youth outreach work that's going on- that the youth outreach work that's going on kind of around the city, the direct engagement with young people, not the events, but the, like, the on-the-street kind of engagement. A number of partners you all have worked with and kind of have developed those relationships with over the years, and those are partners that have really trusting relationships with young people, a lot of credibility, a lot of experience, right? A lot of capacity to do that work. In particular, I'm wondering how the engagement teams have been responding to the needs of Latina youth or their families, especially around curfew issues. What experience has the team had engaging Latina youth in the past or even into this year? And what are lessons that you've learned from the field that you've shared or ways that you've continued to evolve that capacity?
Thank you, Councilmen. So, I know last summer, we'd had a partnership on the ground with our Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, making sure that we had Spanish speakers in place to engage with our Latina population. I will say anecdotally, we haven't seen a very large number of Latina youth that we have been able to engage out in the areas where we've been doing engagement. That doesn't mean they're not there. I think we know they are, and so, we want to make sure we're meeting folks where we're at and we have the resources to do it, language and otherwise. So, this summer, we'll be continuing that partnership with MEMA and definitely looking for other organizations. I will say the movement team, who is our school-based partner in Digital Harbor, one of the things that they did, just in response to the school population there, was hire outreach workers who are Spanish speakers and who can engage. And so, definitely looking to build that capacity and make sure that we have the resources we need on the ground. That's one of those adaptations that we'll make sure we plan for as we move on.
Thank you, Director Moveronis. I really appreciate that. On the engagement side, and this could be for either the larger funders of the summer programming or the direct providers of summer programming, and you don't all have to speak, but if, you know, if you kind of look around and decide who maybe is best positioned to respond. I have a letter here from one of our community school coordinators that I'll pass over to staff to make sure it's included in the record. But she and others in the community have been speaking about the loss of summer program seats, especially in East and Southeast Baltimore, and concern out of school communities with larger Latino, Latina student populations, which is every school in the First District in a wonderful, in a wonderful way, that are facing particular challenges accessing engagement and enrichment this summer. Can so, either on the broader funder level or specific providers, can you share in brief how your organization or agency is meeting the needs of promoting and providing programming that's in languages beyond English and partnering with community organizations that have long been serving these young people and have credibility and relationships there? So, I was thinking that could be BCIF, could be Baltimore's Promise, it could be Baltimore City Schools.
I didn't want to just jump up and assume it was city schools, but I will take the question. So, we actually, within our programming, have expanded the offerings for multilingual learners once we were charting kind of the ratio of our programs to the very much increasing numbers of multilingual learners across the district as well. So, the Spanish Language Arts Program that I referenced earlier is one of those big hits, and it actually has been particularly successful with our newcomer students who are still early in their language development, because as I'm sure we all know, the arts, you know, make it more accessible to try language when, you know, you're trying out for a play, you're getting ready to sing a song. So, we've expanded those programs. Also, about three years ago, and again, something we've prioritized even with reduced resources, has been our high school multilingual learner programming, particularly at schools like Patterson and others with large concentrations of multilingual learners for similar reasons, because we knew that there are just special needs, that someone whose first language is not English, he was just learning the language, and particularly newcomers who are adolescents, or are what we call our SCIF students, our students with interrupted formal education, who might be, in some cases, coming to formalized school for the first time in secondary school. And so, we have crafted those programs clearly. I won't say that we have enough, because we don't, and we'll always, you know, we're always working around that. But that's an area that when we were looking at prioritizing, when we knew the SR funding was going away, we made sure to really hold steady that, and also the response with our families. And we do try to check across the city for where the programming is, but particularly in neighborhoods, communities and schools where we know we'll get a chance to serve larger numbers of multilingual learners. We don't have as many programs in native languages for every language. So, we've prioritized Spanish, frankly, initially, because it is still our largest multilingual learner community. Does that help? Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Thank you.
Wanted to provide a quick response from the Summer Funding Collaborative. We're not a direct funder, but in our facilitation of decision-making related to the programs that are funded, we facilitate a Spanish-language-only review process for young people and families so that they are able to fully participate in that decision-making process. We also ask the question in the data collection around who's being served, languages that are available, and in our coordination with the Mayor's Office around the citywide summer systems work, we've partnered with MEMA to increase access across all summer providers to make sure that they're able to be trained and have access to the tools and resources that the city is putting in place.
The last question is, I think, very straightforward, but it's along the same lines of engagement, this particularly for MOED around YouthWorks participation. As Dr. Santalisis mentioned, right, we have a growing language diversity and cultural diversity in, among young people in our city. I think 20% more or less of students last year identified as Latina. I'm curious, as somebody who's hosted YouthWorks and had a wonderful time hosting YouthWorks students in our community in Highland Town for at least a decade, I think now, and excited to go to my training here in a few weeks. I'm curious, how has that change in the makeup, demographic makeup of young people in the city of Baltimore? How has, how have you seen that evolving in terms of YouthWork participation? And what percentage Latina, is that a question you ask as some of you track? And I'm just curious where we stand at this moment, and has that been growing? Is there anything in particular that you've done to address any barriers to involvement or engagement?
We do disaggregate and track all of that data. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can tell you anecdotally, there is an increase. I think in terms of response to particularly our multilingual population, those who primarily are speaking Spanish, we try to increase the number of staff that we have who are bilingual speakers. I believe our, within our career coach staff, we have two. We've also translated all of our documents into Spanish with the help of MEMA. And then we are working on a project this year, a pilot project for a special population of individuals with MEMA and with CASA that will be rolled out this, this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is going to be one question and then a committee request. There is noticeably one agency that is not present, and that's Wreckin' Parks. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you guys. You didn't present, so I have this question. So, I do know that we have summer programming. I enrolled my own son in summer programming. There is a resident cost and a non-resident cost. I would like to know the total number of seats and then the total expected resident that we expect to be in those seats, because the non-resident cost, I get it, but I have young people in Sandtown and Harlem Park that desperately need those seats. I just want to make sure that we are thinking about equity, because if I can afford the $200 for the program and there's an available seat and it's in Sandtown, when I have a young person in Harlem Park in Sandtown that don't have that seat, I think about the traveling distance. So, I just want to know, how are we accounting for the residents versus non-resident seats? And then, how are we making sure that areas where we see low numbers of residents enrolling are being engaged as well?
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilman. And just want to confirm, Mr. Chair, that Tony will have the follow-up and then we'll do as we do with any other hearing, and I'll follow up with the agency to get the information back to the committee.
They are here, so if they have an answer, I would just like to hear it.
Yep, Councilman Torrance, we're just going to make sure that we have a report that addresses that, I think that there's been work done with Chief of Staff Smith and Director Moore around those particular things, as we've been having conversation, myself and Deputy Mayor Merrill, around that equity piece and making sure that there's the seats, seat availability, along with the actual employment, because we know we actually have to have fully staffed Wreck Centers, opportunities in places where we employ people to actually have the programming for a lot of our recreation over the summer. So, I just want to make sure that our Chief of Staff, along with our Director in the work that they've been doing, is clear, and we can give you a comprehensive report. We could follow up with you with that.
Yeah, that's not helpful. I just want to be clear. The expectation is that I have young people who, I just noticed on your report, they only had one Wreck rollout and we had no Wreck in Sandtown, right? So, I have young people who don't want to commute to Harlem Park, and there is multiple assets from Wreckin' Parks in the neighborhood. I want to know what the plan is to accommodate, with last year, we had over 400 young people who needed placement that could not be placed with elevated other resources. So, I just want to be clear that there is Harlem Park, which is available, that has a resident cost of $75 and a non-resident cost of $150. I have young people who live in Gilmore Homes, who are low-income, who need access to those programs, who are not going to city school summer enrollment. Thank you, city schools, for providing seats in Sandtown, but there are some kids who won't qualify for those seats, because they're not actually eligible for the extensive enrichment that they need in terms of, they may need the extra help with tutoring, as well as we, there's a lot that's going on, but I just want to make sure that when we do this report, I just want to know, the non-resident seats versus the resident seats, the expectation that if those seats are not filled, how are we offering those seats to low-income residents in Sandtown, especially Gilmore Homes? And are we coordinating with HABC, which also has funds available to assist young people in Gilmore Homes to actually have access to summer programming? I just want to make sure that that's clear, Tony.
Councilman, we, I just checked with Legislative Services. We have your request. I think they're not prepared to answer the question right now. I agree with you, they should be, but...
So, can I have an expectation on when that will be produced?
So, I mean, what timeline are you looking at? I mean, I can, we'll take it back, obviously, as soon as we get the formal request from the committee. It's the same process we always follow.
So, I would like it sent tonight and give you two weeks from tonight to have it.
Sure, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairs and Committee. I want to first apologize for being late. I was speaking at one of the feeder marches earlier around our immigrant community, and it was very heartening to see so many people really committed to our community. So, I do apologize for being late. And I'm also just so grateful that I am not the only one asking questions about the Latino community and the immigrant community. I'm grateful to have Councilman Parker here. So, he took care of that question for me, and I appreciate that. The only thing that I would like to just add is, for Director Moveronis, and really for any of you, we want to be your partners in promoting your programming. And so, we got, for instance, this April 16th, you know, Wreck on the Run announcement that day that you'd be at Lake Montebello. And I have a newsletter that comes out on Mondays. If I have your graphic by 4:00 PM, it will get in my newsletter. I have a really cool 90-seconds video that I'm happy to talk about what's going on, so... And I know I'm not the only one that has a newsletter and does socials. So, if you could send us the information about your programming, about the youth engagement strategy, and enough time that we can integrate it, we will do that. And so, you know, if we can figure out a timeline, something like that, because again, I got that on the day of that you'd be at Lake Montebello.
Yeah, and thanks for that, Councilwoman. And just as we did last summer, we will share all of the Rock to Block information council-wide, and then separately, we'll send out any district-specific events to the respective council members. And then I know that Assistant Deputy Mayor Luigay talked about the Be More This Summer, about the bemorthisummer.org website that we also have available, where you can see the events that are taking place as well. But we will separately send out social media assets to the council to share amongst your constituents.
In plenty of time for us to integrate it into our work. The day of is not going to work.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think everyone's had an opportunity to ask a question. I want to circle back on a question brought up in testimony in the beginning, and it was noted, and I guess this goes to the Youth Fund, it was noted that we are using the emergency investment trigger in order to transfer funds. Was there, or have we identified what that cut was from either the federal level or from the state level that then triggers the emergency investment? Yes, yes, or the administration, either, either or.
What's the, say the question again from Mr. Chair.
So, in order to move funds from the Youth Fund to cover a general-funded program, you need, you're using the emergency investment trigger, and that has to be triggered by a cut from either federal or state programs in order to make the move? I'm just curious, in line with the question that was brought up during testimony, what is that trigger?
Can we prepare some materials for you around that? I think you're talking about the ordinance that was in place originally, that was then replaced. So, the ordinance that I've been sharing, that's been shared with me, doesn't have a trigger in it for federal funding. It doesn't have any language there that would also prevent funding to the city. It doesn't have any trigger that says the federal funding isn't present. I think the ordinance that we're referring to is the original ordinance that was then replaced with an updated ordinance.
Yeah, I would appreciate clarification there. That'd be very helpful. Okay. Thank you. All right, we are going to open back up to public testimony. Now that folks have had an opportunity, I know a lot of folks have left, an opportunity to hear from the agencies, hear from our partners about what we believe to be the gap and the problem, and some of the solutions that we put forward. I want to open the floor one more time to public testimony before we close out. So, if you are interested in providing feedback, we'd love to hear it. Please, sir, and please state your name for the record.
Hello, how you all doing? My name is Ricardo Manderson. I'm the president of the local St. Joseph's community, and I'm also a district-wide community leader. My main question, my main focus is based on youth employment in general. So, I listened to you all talk about the money that was allocated towards the Youth Fund, $4.9 million. That's a paltry insulting number when considering the amounts you all allocate towards funding developers. That's a paltry number when you all consider the amount you all allocate towards arresting these young people and incarcerating these young people. That's a paltry number. It actually, when divided by 8,500, amounts to $576 for, in the total entirety of their program. While at Johns Hopkins University, where I was the QA manager, I actually oversaw the youth, youth program, and I was the one who allocated their work and, you know, placed them, and that was one of the tasks. And they were there almost no time at all. We had one set, and then we had another set. $576 in today's economy is pitiful. It amounts to a month, one month out of a three-month summer. It is insulting when you consider how much money you all allocate to parks. There are more, there's more money dedicated to parks than there are to the children that are our future. Baltimore's greatest asset is the children. That's... That's, the human beings are our human capital. That's the greatest asset. So all this other money that you all are investing elsewhere, it's absolutely pitiful. And, and there's no other way to say it when considering the massive amounts of money, a multi-billion-dollar budget, and owe $5 million to 170,000 young people. And most of them don't even get that. It is less than, it's not even on par to what I was making when I was in the youth works, the one year I worked, the youth work, 30 years ago at Harlem Park Rec. I, it doesn't even, they make less money now than I made back then. They can't buy the things, I had a part-time job after that. My part-time job paid me enough to where I bought myself a $1,200 car. They can't buy that 30 years later with inflation. It is insulting the amount of money that you all are allocating towards these youth. It is insulting the amount of money you all have allocated to these programs. Like, these numbers don't even make sense when you actually look at things. Look how much it costs for a pair of tennis shoes. What can they buy with the money? And then we criminalize these kids, and we act like they're the problem for carjacking and stealing and whatever else. But they can't even get a job at McDonald's. I'm a huge supporter of the Latinx community. However, when you walk in almost any McDonald's, the whole entire staff is Latin. Those part-time jobs that used to go to those kids are no longer there. So how can we continue to criminalize these kids without incentivizing these businesses via tax breaks or some other structure to make sure that they can actually, actually be supported and actually be financially sustained? Because many of these kids don't have parents to take care of them. So that's the reason why they're out there stealing cars and carjacking people and doing all this other stuff. So we criminalize their behavior without providing the infrastructure as adults. We're responsible, they're not responsible, they're kids. So we're responsible, and we're not doing the things necessary to make sure that they can financially sustain themselves, but yet we blame them for everything. We blame them for not, for being poor. We blame them for being poor, and it's insulting.
So, sir, I want to clarify a couple things. So the youth fund is generally, excuse me, the youth works program is generally funded out of the general fund. And I think part of the question about the move of funds from the youth fund to, to the youth, to youth works, is that youth works is generally funded by the general fund, out of our general pot of money that funds everything from picking up trash to anything else. The youth fund is, it's a pot of money put aside for young people and youth programming all year round, but sometimes during the summer. So this is on top of what we already put toward youth. So I agree with you. I think we need to be pouring more money into our young people, and I think that's part of the reason why we decided to hold this hearing in the community. And I appreciate your passion, I think you're spot on. And I think what we don't want to see is robbing Peter to pay Paul, when Peter and Paul are our young people either way. And that's what we're trying to navigate.
Yes, but you consider the harbor development. Hundreds of million dollars you allocated to one developer.
Yeah, I agree.
And to a, to a development that will not serve any of them. You've allocated hundreds of millions of dollars to developers all across, all across the city. I was actually protesting with Councilwoman Ramos, you know, fight, you know, stop the stuff, pass the law, for, because the money's not going back into our communities. So we're using all these taxpayer dollars that are being funded by the minority population of the city, and it's not going back into their own young people. And yet you're criminalizing their young people and creating a jobs program, what it essentially is with the criminal justice system, to put them in boxes. It is absurd.
So I'll say this, and I, again, I appreciate, appreciate your passion. I know we have other folks who want to testify, but what I will say, you know, as a father, as a young person, in youth works, I get your point in terms of our pay scale, because the reality speaks to an issue that's broader than not only here in Baltimore, but the state of Maryland in the United States, as it relates to wages that have been artificially low for so long and have not kept up with inflation. So there are some things that we all need to be thinking about as well. But again, I appreciate what you're saying in terms of that time value of money, and what a dollar could buy 30 years ago when we were teenagers, not the same as right now. And I look at my son, who's 15, 16, he's not going to buy a car with that youth works money, but I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, so they're not even making what we were making 30 years ago, and it's not, and the money also doesn't go as far. So that, it's just, it's insulting. I'll yield the floor to someone.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, appreciate your testimony. We can walk down the list, I would...
Yes, I know that we've had some folks who have ever, are testified, that if you're here and you signed up to testify, we'll go through this list. I think there are some that are duplicated, so let's go through this list. Okay, what is this? Let's see, Urban Hartnett? Let's see.
Erica.
Erica Hamlin? Hamlet? Thank you to my colleague for helping me to decipher the language. Please, come in.
Good evening, everyone. I am no stranger to a lot of the individuals on the panel tonight. I am from the 14th District. And I am also formerly the mayor's Office of Employment Development's first mobile career navigator, after the city did away with its mobile bus. And I'm also Baltimore City's first female hospital violence responder. So again, I am no stranger to Baltimore City and community service. But before I was any of those accomplished things, I am a product of parents who suffered from substance abuse. So my passion and my concern is the lapse in services and funding to support those children. I'm pretty sure I could ask a number of people in the room, do you know anyone with a substance abuse disorder? Anyone in your family? And now with the allocated funding over a hundred, hundreds and millions of dollars for opioid response, I ask, what about the children? They are children attached to these people and these numbers, and are we servicing them? These are the children that are doing the carjackings. These are the children that are the squeegee kids. So what kind of attention is being paid? Is there funding being allocated for this? And are there people like myself sitting at the table as peers, making this support happen? I've applied for the Baltimore City Youth Fund several times. One of the reasons why we got denied was because the question was, how are you going to keep those that are actively addicted engaged in workforce development? Unfortunately, it is because there is a lapse in understanding. Our funding wasn't to request for adult individuals who are actively addicted, it was for older children of those who suffer with substance abuse. I started my organization in 2018, The Soap, Thriving Healing Empowering Seeds of Addicted Parents, because an event that I had last year, some adults, it was the first time that they've ever got to talk about their experience during the addiction process. Our parents may go to treatment, but when our parents go to treatment, how do we support the children? If your parent never goes to treatment, do you not need that same support? So I'm here tonight just asking that these organizations and these school programs, have you had a look at the students that come to school every day and may be a problem child? Or the child that come to school every day and has a complete 100 on everything? These children are the product of parents who suffer with substance abuse, and how are we supporting them?
So I'll just say, thank you for, thank you for raising that point. I know, I speak for myself, I know Councilman R. Porter, who's not here, also sits on the opioid restitution advisory board. So again, that's something we can take back to that group in terms of some of, some of the allocations as we move forward. So I really do thank you for, for raising that. And as someone who has family members who've also been affected, thank you so much for the work that you've been doing on that front.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Brandon Clayton.
Real quick, I do apologize, I didn't really have a question, but while I am up here, I will acknowledge, well, I will speak. So I will, because we already provide feedback, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
So my, my name is Brandon Clayton, I am the executive director of Young Successful Leaders, a nonprofit organization in Baltimore City, serving young people between the ages of nine to 18, teaching entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and leadership. One thing that I will point out is, I will say that I was grateful to hear the numbers, I'm grateful that you guys are here and we're having this meeting, and grateful for the people that are also in the room tonight, because I think it is important that we are here, and we're showing up, and we're hearing this data information. It's great to see that young people are going to be able to get paid through youth works. I do agree with the brother over here that we will allow to see the numbers scale up as far as the payment, but I know it's a process, and I know that minimum wage just went up, I believe, last July to $15 an hour, so I think that is important to note. I think, like I said, seeing more young people with collaboration as far as Baltimore City Public Schools, BCYF, with the Family League and other partners that are here in the room today, MRC as well, that are here for that collaboration, and seeing the young people thrive. So that's all the feedback I had, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Brandon, can you, can you stand up? Just come back. Brandon, can you tell everyone how old you are?
Yes, I'm 26.
Brandon, can you tell everybody when you started YSL?
Yes, I started five years ago, 2020.
So at 21, I had no desire to do anything for anyone other than myself, to be honest. I was 21 in college, it was about me. And I just want to publicly thank you for the work you continue to do each and every day, to give of yourself, to make sure that you're pulling other young men and women up of the youth district, but all around Baltimore. You are a credit to everything that is great, you should ever be highlighted. And I just wanted to thank you personally and publicly for all the work you continue to do. If there's anyone out here that has any, any dollar that you want to give from any foundation, please give it to YSL, they do an amazing work. And this is the face of not only YSL, but this is what Baltimore is, and this is what Baltimore does, so thank you.
I appreciate it, Councilman. I appreciate it in all, appreciate it in all. Yeah, just real quick, it's so funny, too. Councilman Torrance, we just saw each other earlier today, right? See, and I'm here today, right? I was at an all-day conference, but I came here today, because I'm just available about the work, you know? It's so important, especially for our young people. I'm here, like I said, as a representative. Like you said, I actually was a former Baltimore City Youth Commissioner, so that's how I got started. So I had a chance to work with you guys back in 2018 to 2020. And then after that, I wanted to do so much more. So that's why I'm important here today, like Councilman said, put boots to the ground, we've done cleanups together, community engagement work together, and continue to do the work moving forward, of course. So that's all I have, thank you again, I appreciate y'all.
You forgot to tell them what you were doing. You forgot to tell them what you were doing, so...
Man, you gonna have me up here, I don't want to hold up time on nobody, but yes.
Listen, I'll do it for you. You were in a group of 100 leaders from across Baltimore City today, talking about housing stability, we're talking about helping elders, we're talking about just digging down during youth engagement. You guys had whiteboards out and talked about solutions together, and how people like us can take those ideas and implement them? So I just want to applaud you, because some of us don't have the time between constituent services, families, trying to run past fires. A lot of the ideas come from you, because you have that lived experience, or you're seeing a gap in where the work is. And I just want to applaud you for that, too.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Brandon. I want to be sensitive of time, we're at 7 o'clock now, and I understand there may be some other folks that still want to testify. We have a long list of folks here who lined up, but we're just going to open it up to the folks who are still here. So if you wish to testify, please just line up, we're going to give you an opportunity to speak your mind. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Gwen Levi. And I came home in 2020, came back to Baltimore, and I cried at the condition of our city. I cried because of the housing, I cried because there were rec centers that weren't there anymore. Our youth were basically running rampant through the streets. But since 2020, I am proud of our city. I'm proud that progressively, not all at once, but progressively over the last five years, I've seen a change. I've seen the results of what you all are doing, and I want to say thank you. But in saying thank you, I know there's more to be done. I understand what the brother is saying, there's a lot more we can do. Other cities are watching. I was in Ohio, and they told me, what's that about that youth program you all got down there in Baltimore? Come on, we're getting recognition, but we can do more. But one of the things you said when we first, this was a first-time effort having this public setting, please, I don't care what you do or how you do it, we got to find a way. This place should be packed. This was a citywide effort. This was not a Emerson Village effort, this was a citywide public hearing. We have to do more to engage our communities. We have to do more to make the people come out, so that they will know about these programs. I didn't hear about this until today. There are other organizations, there are, I've been to a build organization, and they had 500 people. Come on, how many of you all up there? Why are your communities not sitting in here today? There's a lack of communication going on somewhere in our community, and we have to change so that we can know what you all are doing. Most of us in here either work, or advocate, or some kind of way in this process. What about the people who live in the homes? What about the people who, who live in our community? They're not in here, they're not hearing this. So we got to find a way so that they can hear it, so that they can benefit from these programs. Thank you.
Could not agree with you more.
Good evening, good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you, Brandon, and for all the other small nonprofits and organizations that were here tonight, I'm really grateful for those folks to be here. My name is Larry Simmons, I'm the chair of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, but I'm also a commissioner with the Baltimore City Public Schools, and I'm a resident of Emerson Village in the grade eight. And so just in that same vein of what Brandon kind of brought to the conversation, and what we kind of acknowledged him for, I think that it's, it's an important perspective that I don't think we've heard enough of tonight, tonight, or since this conversation has started after the hearing on March 27th. We have not had that voice of the small mom-and-pop grassroots organization, but what we have had, right, are those organizations who are large, who are big, who oftentimes have the revenue and the relationships to bring us together like this, right? When folks get upset, then all this kind of stuff starts happening, right? And so I just want us to be mindful of that perspective of those small grassroots mom-and-pop organizations who are actually doing the work every day with our young people, who are so close, right, who maybe those organizations, those young people only have, right? So we really need to think about those folks when we have these type of conversations. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry.
My name's Joe Carlini, I have a nonprofit called Chrysler Counselor. It's an opioid response program in Baltimore City. I also do reentry, I also help youth in many different neighborhoods, I help with gang relations between the gangs and the police task force. There isn't pretty much anything I don't do. I also sleep in the streets some nights with some of our homeless. I will do anything and everything I can, I'm not worried about money. I understand that people do need money to make things happen, but I survive off of $432 a week after I give the rest of my money away to the people in the streets. I will do that every single day until the day that there will be no more of this left. I understand that everybody needs to work together. I understand that Erica came up and talked about the opioid restitution fund. I deal with kids every single day who, I'm helping them out while their mom's up getting high, or turning a trick, or doing something of that nature, just to try to keep their head out of the, out of the game. There's kids out there suffering, they don't need a movie, they don't need a pool time all the time, they need someone to be next to them, and to hold them up, and to make sure that they're okay, and to make sure that they can go to bed at night, and make sure that they have food in their stomach. It's not just about, let's have a fun time. That's all good, and that's all well and good, and I completely appreciate that. But I'm worried about the kids who are sitting there watching their mom and pop, sitting there OD'd, and I'm doing a reversal on them, and they're, they're watching me do that, and they have no idea what's going on. This is real stuff. I watch it every single day. I run up in bando's, I pull, I pulled a, I pulled a young girl, two years old, lost her life because her mom had OD'd and forgot about her. That's going to sit with me for the rest of my life. And it's because no one's paying attention. We can all sit here and we can talk, we can do everything in this, in this world, but when we put our feet to the street, we actually make it happen, and we show these kids a better way of life, a better way of life. show these kids a better way of life, a better way of life, that's when you're going to see the change. I'll do anything. I make sure that I take the kids. I took 25 kids to the O's game last night, because I went knocked on the CEO's door, and I said, hey, I need tickets for these kids. I get them to the Regal Cinemas, because I knock on the door. I need tickets for these kids. I don't want your money. They want your money. I do everything out of the kindness of my heart, and it's because I believe in other people. If we believe in each other, we no longer need financial resources. We just need each other, and that's the real shit. Appreciate y'all. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I know I spoke earlier, but I feel like something missing from, to talk about Youth Works and barriers that you sort of brought up earlier for your district, Councilman Gray, is that correct? As a worksite manager for years, and as a parent of the youth workers, the documents are a huge barrier also for our immigrant families, but also for our families that are children that he was just speaking of. They have no access to their documents. And we, as citizens that know that this is the issue, we need to help these young people get access to their documents. And our immigrant families that may or may not have them, we need to figure out ways that we can attract our Latino community's youth to Youth Works, and maybe have separate funds to have stipends for them, because we know that they may not have them, or they may have gotten lost in immigration, or they may be in process. But so many of our youth, whether they're immigrants, or whether they're our youth that are born here, do not have access to their documents for various reasons. So if there were, there were people that work at Youth Works year-round, not just six months, I feel like that's a big issue, having been a worksite manager. Most of Youth Works staff is six-month staff. And they have a very small year-round staff. So more funding for them to have a larger year-round staff, that they could have representatives that are more like community school coordinators, but community Youth Works coordinators that can get to District Nine and District Eight, and that can help children get their documents, that is where it would be really important to put some funding. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak again.
No, thank you. And I can, thank you is very on point. I could tell you, as a father who helped a son navigate that process with all the documents, it could be enough just for someone who already has all the information. But again, when you speak to someone who has a challenge, again, that navigation point is really critical. So we do thank you for that. And so, again, I'm glad we both began and ended with public testimony. It looks like we have concluded the public testimony. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate everyone coming out today. Again, I think this is an important first step for us to do meetings in the community, and for you guys to see the work of the council and how we tackle these issues. I appreciate all the impassioned testimony, and of course, the great work done by our city agencies. We have quite a bit of follow-ups. What we'll do is we'll make sure that we follow up with an email on what we're looking for, so that we make sure we keep these things moving forward. And I appreciate the great work and the attendance today.
And so we will stand adjourned.